To order. We have a roll call.
Commissioner Joseph.
Here.
Commissioner Lama.
Here.
Commissioner Sivasan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Viscara.
Here.
Mayor Goldman.
Here.
All members present.
I pledge allegiance. Mr. Pugula. Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation.
Rabbi.
Hi, good evening. Dear God, Master of the universe, we stand humbled before you this evening as we recognize all of your blessings that you have bestowed upon us collectively as a community and individually as private citizens. We are mindful of the fact that you have blessed this city with wonderful leadership, direction, dedication, and guiding spirit, which has resulted in the many successful achievements over the last 25 years here in Sunny Isles Beach, and we praise you for this. We recognize that we are gathered before you this evening in pursuit of fulfilling your wishes. As you, dear God, empowered humanity with seven basic universal laws after the great flood of Noah, these laws were once again reaffirmed by Moses at Mount Sinai to be taught to all of humanity. Universal laws that provide a framework of law, order, and justice, which will allow humanity to settle the earth in a civilized manner. We recognize that we have been entrusted by the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach to perform this sacred duty. We recognize that our decisions will have a lasting impact far into the future. So therefore, Almighty God, please provide us with a consciousness to constantly be aware of your presence so that we are consistent to our mandate. Please grant us the wisdom, intuition, and sensitivity to succeed so that we leave a legacy of having a positive impact upon society for many generations to come. Please, God, guide our police department and city staff to make the right decisions with honesty, integrity, and knowledge for all of our citizens into the future. And may they continue to serve as positive role models for our beautiful community. Almighty God, in these times, we do not take our safety and security for granted. Protect our police force, our servicemen and women, serving domestically and overseas, in the name of freedom and democracy. Please give them the peace of mind, insight, and intuition to be successful. May everyone gathered here tonight and all the residents of Sunny Isles Beach be granted with good health, peace of mind, and prosperity, and let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, next item, we have the summary minutes of September 6th. Can we group them together?
Mm-hmm.
September 6th, September 15th, and then the summary minutes of the regular city commission meeting on September 15th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that may become before the city commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking, and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you don't cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers. There are a few changes to tonight's agenda as follows. We're going to hear Item 10I, Joint Procurement Agreement with North Miami Beach, out of order. And we have one add-on, which is Item 10R, Resolution Correcting a Scrivener's Error in Resolution Number 2022-3401. And Item 12D regarding Golden Shores Undergrounding Project is deferred. Do I hear a motion to approve these changes?
So moved.
So moved. Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Special presentations. Item 5A.
Yeah, this is the introduction of the new Miami-Dade Fire Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of this great commission, to our appointed leaders, to the men and women in blue, Chief Santiago, and to the residents of Sunny Isles Beach. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to stand here before you as one of the 2,800 members of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue and the Fire Chief of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, but also your fire department. You know, today I just want to kind of harp on Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, and I know that also there's a meet and greet, and I'll introduce myself after the fact. But, you know, I just want to tell you where Miami-Dade Fire Rescue is today, your department. We're now at 159 apparatuses that serve all of Miami-Dade County. And it's not just secluded to different areas or different municipalities. This also includes Sunny Isles Beach. Of the 159 apparatuses, that staff now 71 firehouses. Strictly or specifically to Sunny Isles Beach, we have Station 10 that ran 77% of the calls of the 3,900 calls, just under 3,900 calls last year for Sunny Isles Beach. So 77% of those calls were ran by Station 10. Another 13% were ran by Station 21, which is about a mile out from this municipality. And then the remaining of the calls were ran from various stations. So, you know, what goes with a fire station, a firehouse, a fire department, you know, especially with Sunny Isles Beach, you know, it's not necessarily single-family resident homes. You have apartment buildings, high-rises, you know, commercial establishments. It's not a one-fire truck or two-fire truck response. It's usually a dozen. And as the incident escalates, sometimes it could be up to two dozen trucks. And those trucks, you know, they come from all areas of Miami-Dade County. And at the same time, they do backstaff the station when it's vacant as a result of these, you know, long-term calls. You know, we had last year for fiscal year 2021, just under a seven-minute response in the Sunny Isles Beach, considering that traffic, for all of us, we've seen it, continues to increase. On top of that, I wanted to address the customer service rating for the Sunny Isles Beach as a result of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue being your department. We had a 4.88 survey satisfaction out of the, out of 5.98% of the residents absolutely approved of our service. So of the 3,800 that received the survey, we received 10% back, and, I'm sorry, we submitted 10% of the 3,800, and of that, 22 had actually responded. These are specifically residents of Sunny Isles Beach. So it's not outskirts of Sunny Isles Beach or somebody that may have been just visiting it specifically to Sunny Isles Beach. Which again, just shows that, you know, the quality of care for the residents of Sunny Isles Beach is unmatched with any other agency. A little bit about myself. So I'm a 46-year-old guy, married, with two daughters. Been in the fire service since 1989. Now, if you do the math, you're thinking that's 13 years old, and that is correct. I was an explorer with Miami-Dade Fire Rescue back in the day, out of junior high school. From there, at the age of 19, I got hired with Palm Beach County. Four years later, I joined Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. From there, ran through the ranks of firefighter, lieutenant, captain, battalion chief. And then I was bestowed the honor of becoming the assistant chief, then the deputy chief, and now the fire chief of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. But I'm standing here not, you know, not a fool to say that I did this all by myself. And some of the members that just recently, as a result of my appointment, I appointed also. And behind me, I have my chief of staff, Erika Benitez, my deputy chief of operations, Danny Tardesso, my assistant director for administrative services, Maria Reyes. As many of you guys know, the nice-looking gentleman, district chief for North District, Mike Eng, and battalion chief, Anil Apana. So these are just some of the... Thank you. These are just some of the men and women that represent the 2,800 members of our great organization that call, you know, your fire department for Sunny Isles Beach. And again, just honored to be standing here before you. Extremely, extremely honored the fact that you have asked that I stand before you and give you the report, and of course, you know, introduce myself. So thank you, and I open the floor to any questions.
So I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The responses that you had said back from Sunny Isles Beach residents that also regarded your medic responses?
In regard to patient care?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So there are four questions. They raise the questions from zero to five. And two of the questions are based specifically to the quality of care and the, you know, transport and of course, I'm sorry, treatment, the professional manner, the expectations, and did we maintain the needs, your needs, in a timely manner? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Your presence, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Good luck.
Thank you. We can, Lea? We'd love to, we'd love to have a picture with our fire rescue. That's okay. Thank you so much, really, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So are we?
We got one more.
The next item is Police Department New Hires and Promotions. So Police Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Mr. Manager. Proud to announce, back in September, we promoted four sergeants. One is on vacation, but I'd like to acknowledge him, Sergeant Tom Prongay, well deserved. But tonight, I'd like to start off by calling up Sergeant Jonathan Conitz. Followed by Sergeant Mike Barlari. And lastly, Sergeant Philip Hernandez. So I would like to call up for John, his brother Dove, for Mike, his better half, Jason, and for Flip, his wife, Kristen. Have the honor of putting the badge. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, well deserved. So lastly, I want to recognize our newest hire, have him come front and center, Officer Gabriel Martinez. He comes with experience from just over the bridge, North Miami Beach in Georgia, and we're very lucky to have him. Welcome aboard.
Yes, yes, yes.
So we're going to... No, give me one second, Chief. We're just going to hear the next one as a proclamation so that you can take the picture while you're down there.
This is a proclamation for Hindu Heritage Month. And as far as reading the proclamation, whereas Hindu Americans, I wasn't prepared for this. Need to get my glasses. Whereas Hindu Americans are a vibrant community of South Miami, contributing to Miami-Dade County and to Florida's economic prosperity, social welfare, and cultural diversity. And whereas October is a very important month for Hindu Americans who celebrate festive joy and sharing in festivals like Navaratri, Vijaya Dashami, Raksha Banhan, and Dhawali, and more. And whereas Navaratri is the celebration of the feminine energy, Shakti, and the goddess whose spirit is the empowering energy of nourishment, courage, victory, knowledge, wealth, prosperity, and good cheer. And whereas Raksha Banhan is the celebration of the holy bond of sisters and brothers in the family and in society. And whereas Vijaya Dashami is a celebration of the victory over oneself by the process of fasting, introspection, meditation, and prayer over nine days of stringent observation of such austerity. And whereas Dhawali is the festival of lights of the Indian-American community of the Hindu, Jain, Buddhist, and Sikh, Dharmic practicing faiths, coming together to celebrate a holy period in celebration of wealth, health, prosperity, and good cheer. Therefore, Dana Goldman, as mayor of Sunny Isles Beach, hereby proclaims October 2022 as Hindu Heritage Month.
So my name is Lin Su, and I was a former Sunny Isles resident. I had created a couple of events here when you had a Taiwanese Sister City event. It was a, I see how Sunny Isles is very, the people of Sunny Isles are very embracing and very inclusive. I also wanted to point out that in South Florida, there are 50,000 of these Hindu that reside here, very silent. They contribute to all facets of society. They're in the medical profession, they are business owners, they are, they're all over the place, they just don't really voice themselves out. And I think that this was a very opportune and auspicious time because Dhawali is October 24th. There are many temples around here. If you'd like to participate, I'm sure that they would love to have you. And also, I just wanted to come here, and I was a former Miami-Dade County Asian American Advisory Board member that was appointed by the commissioner. And I had represented all Asians. And with the Hindu, there is a, there is a misunderstanding, and there is some Hindu hatred going on. So anti-Hindu because, you know, the way they dress, wearing turbans and whatnot. So I just wanted to make sure that the city does recognize them and all that the, all the Hindu residents will be happy in living here. I myself am a Buddhist, and Buddha was actually a Hindu, was born a Hindu. So it's kind of like, you know, the Christianity-Judaism relationship. So with that said, there are, like I said, October 24th, there are many events around town. There's one big one in Pompano City, at Pompano Beach. And if you'd like to visit and learn more about our Hindu neighbors, that would be really great. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you to the mayor and the commission, and especially Commissioner Jerry Joseph, who had helped me acquire this proclamation. And thank you to the city of Sunny Isles Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Lin.
Thank you, Lin.
Yes, Mayor, so now, I apologize. So now we can go back to 5C, the left car recognition.
Okay, so this is a great night. This is like the first responders' night, and it's really, it's really amazing because obviously they're here to protect us and to safeguard us. So just wanted to be able, as a commission, as a city, to recognize our ocean rescue team. On July 3rd, I was at the beach, having fun with my family, July 4th weekend, and there was some commotion going on. There was a lady deep into the ocean, and apparently she was caught in the rip current. And one of our lifeguards, I was a little concerned because obviously not all of them that were there, but they were there. They were very present, they were watching. And Leo Reyes, one of our lifeguards who is on vacation now, spotted this lady, started telling her to please swim to the side because she was trying to swim against the current, and to swim to the side and then just have kind of like the waves push her out. I don't know if she was able to comprehend the signs that he was trying to impart to her. But anyhow, he stepped in, he jumped into the ocean and rescued her. And it was just amazing to see a life being saved that day. And I'm looking, and obviously there was other ocean rescue staff that was there, you know, caring for the lady. Thank God the lady was okay, but she was okay because of our incredible lifeguards that were there on duty. So I just wanted to kind of recognize you. I know that you do a lot of rescues, there's been a lot of rescues, you know, lately, and you're saving lives. I mean, the way I see it, you are guardian angels, and I can't see any more noble and more meaningful job that you may have. And obviously, you know, this goes to the other, you know, first responders that are here, but you're here. So I think that you need to pat yourselves on the back and really remind yourselves, and we need to remind you that you are greatly appreciated, and what you do is so meaningful, is the most meaningful thing that I can think of, really. So with that being said, I'd like for you to come up and just, you know, tell us a little bit about what you have been doing lately, and if you could read the names of all the staff that are here to make us safe and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's been busy. The past two weeks, probably, there hasn't been a lot of rescues. But prior, before and after the storm, I would say there's probably been about 15 rip current rescues, kids, all kinds of people. And I'll tell you, the lifeguards have been going above and beyond to respond. And I've been here for so long, and it's still just impressing me every day just watching this team in action. They're some lifesavers. What have you have to see for, you were the one that was a supervisor during those times?
As you say, we've been very busy working before and after the hurricane, but we have an amazing team. We have all the equipment, everything we need, and the people are always ready to respond. So now, as you said, we have the last 10 days that was a little bit cramped, but winds are coming again.
We're very thankful. I mean, because without, from the commission, the mayor, the police department, we have all the supplies. I mean, the UTVs, our oxygen kits, our rescue boards, our buoys, I mean, just having the equipment alone with our training, it only just makes the beach safer. And it does feel good, saving lives, and there's a lot of people on our beach, a lot. So I'll go ahead and read the names. It's a lot of names.
Yeah, please.
I'm getting old, so let me try to...
That's what I'm not, that's what I'm not reading.
Gabriel Benitez, which is Ernest Johnson, Brian Shannon, Ryan Reed, Alvin Sanchez, Jonathan Perez, Alexia Rios, Kenya Perez, Edward Phillips, Jesus Mesquita, Juan Sweller. I have to pronounce the name, I'm still pretty good pronouncing it. Luis Diaz. Luis Diaz, George Del Toro, Roberto Rodriguez, Ronald Rodriguez, Daniel Angeles, Daniel Elanges, Leonor Rios, Douglas Guzman, Jose Villa Vicencio, Diego Lombreras, Giselle Afonso, Tania Rios, Rudar Romero, Daniel Villa Bemarin, Vladimir Montalvo, Elizabeth Christian, a lot of employees, Martine Aguilera, Diego Garcia, Ricardo Mateen, Kenya Galar, and we have Jordan Renetto, and we have Macar, and we have David Arias.
And Justin, introduce, introduce yourself as well, please.
Justin Bromin and Ocean Rescue Manager.
Thank you, well, thank you very much.
And we, we love, we love the city, we love the beach, and we'll do everything, put my own life on the line, our own life, Gabriel, the lifeguards, every day. And it's a good feeling.
Justin, the hours that the ocean rescue is there, swim near, near our stand and all that, but what, what hours are you there?
9:30 to 6:00 and 9:00 to 5:30 in the time change.
Which is in a couple of weeks.
And when the lifeguards aren't out there, don't swim. Always swing our lifeguard. Because you know, in between the lifeguard hours, people swim and that's where most of our rescues are. Because we're all about the prevention. So when we see someone in distress, it's very easy for a lifeguard to get right there to the tower, but with our vehicles, we can respond between the towers, which is very helpful. Or run, if you're in shape like Gabriel, he'll run.
As you say, thank this administration, Police Department, we have all the equipment, ATV, we have to be able to respond to any kind of emergency when we are operating. Thank you.
You guys are the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so very much for your service. We have item, we have item 10I, that's, that's item 10I.
Yes, 10I. 10I is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the City of North Miami Beach for a joint procurement process.
I'll let you guys introduce yourself first.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, my name is Sam Simakona, Deputy Director of NMB Water.
Straightly back home. How's Otanat, former City Attorney, City of Sunny Isles Beach, currently of Otanat Law, City Attorney of North Miami Beach. On behalf of the Mayor and Commissioner of the City of Miami, North Miami Beach, we want to say thank you for working with our staff. And this is a great project, in fact, this is a historical agreement. Having served as City Attorney for 14 years in Sunny Isles Beach, this is the first time two local governments in Northeast State are working on a joint capital project to improve, especially the water service that North Miami Beach provides to residents of City of North Miami Beach.
So just to add to that, my name is Genesis Cuevas, Purchasing Manager. And again, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager's Office. This item is being brought before your, before you tonight to request approval of a joint procurement. If approved, both agencies will draft a solicitation, a construction solicitation, and the City of Sunny Isles Beach will release the invitation to bid. The invitation to bid package will include the technical specs of each agency, will include the procurement terms and conditions for federal funding, and will include three pricing sheets. So one pricing sheet per agency and a combined pricing sheet. We anticipate that by utilizing this joint procurement and utilizing the same contractor, that we will minimize the impacts to the residents of the city and realize potential cost savings. City of Sunny Isles Beach and City of North Miami Beach will evaluate the bids with the intent of awarding a contract to the combined lowest responsive responsible bidder. However, each agency does reserve the right to forego awarding a combined bid and they may award to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, whose bid best serves the agency, the respective agency. So we'll have the option to do the combined bid or two separate contracts. We'll have the option for one bid, however, two separate contracts or one joint contract. So if you have any questions on the procurement components, I'm here to answer them, and we also have City of North Miami Beach.
Can, can I just give a little compliment on the really outstanding work that you've been doing in this city, that from a procurement standpoint, you have taken this, the whole process of the city and you've moved it to a whole nother level. So really, this is just a perfect, this is a perfect illustration of the, the quality and the caliber of, of your work and your professionalism and putting in the interest of economy and efficiency and really, it's really, it's just an absolute pleasure to see the work that you've been doing since you've stepped up to the position.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm super honored and happy to be back with the City of Sunny Isles Beach.
This is a great, this is great. I have to say, it's like, it's really, it's, it's like a whole new world, really, really excellent work, really excellent caliber work. And this is a perfect example of that. So just to clarify, this is basically, we have the central drainage project going on and then we have the replacement of the, this is the potable water piping system, correct? And the whole, the whole, just so, so the, for the benefit of our, of our viewers and our audience, what, what's really, what this is all about and what's going on?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. NMB Water will be replacing our eight-inch water mains and all of our service connected along the west side of Collins Avenue and also the connections that joined Collins Avenue. Also, some aerial crossings will be replaced. All the stoplights to existing pipelines will also be transferred to the new line. Total is 10,200 linear feet.
So this is quite a substantial project. So, and then simultaneously, we're kind of, this is a nexus with our, with our own, our own drainage, our own drainage system, correct?
Correct. Or we, we believe that the contract will be working within the same construction limits and it's more economical, safer, and legally is more efficient to work with one contractor.
And what say you, City Attorney Otanat?
Well, again, thank you, thank you, because sometimes cities, it's hard for two cities to work together, but the staff, I think, at least two months, we sat down and worked out the agreement logistic and it's a major cost saver for both cities.
Absolutely, and that's the whole point of, you know, cooperation towards, you know, greater efficiency and economy. So very well done, very well done, very happy to see this. Do we have any public speakers, no public speakers? And so, we have any, any comments from the dais?
I have a comment, just thank you for, for your work, but aside from the cost savings, I think the, reducing the impact, I mean, the, our residents are still going to be inconvenienced by the nature of the work, you're tearing up a road, but combining the efforts means it's less inconvenience. Because we're not tearing it up and fixing it and then two months later, you're tearing it up again. We're trying to, not, not just the economies of scale in terms of money, but also time and repairs and all of that. And for, for those of us who have to commute within the city, I mean, it would be very easy for, for North Miami, for North Miami Beach to say, well, it's not our problem, you know, whatever, deal with it. But you're not doing that, like you're working with us and that's going to help our residents and we really appreciate it.
Good. If we have any other, any other comments or are we ready for a, do we need a motion to approve?
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Is this, is this a?
Aye.
This is a voice vote.
A voice vote, okay. All right, so, City Clerk?
Okay, now we go back to ordinance's first reading at 7A. And it's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach adopting the City of Sunny Isles Beach Comprehensive Plan Text-Based Amendments Creating Recreation Open Space and Conservation Future Land Use Categories, Providing for Severability, Providing for Repealer, Providing for Transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency and other reviewing agencies, and Providing for an Effective Date. And this is first reading.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The ordinance that is before you currently is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment that we discussed during the LPA meeting this evening. This is a text-based amendment to the Comprehensive Plan of Future Land Use, Element 14B, to create definitions for the Recreation Open Space and Conservation Future Land Use Categories. This is required by state statute and is really a housekeeping item to be in compliance with that statute. Should you vote to adopt this ordinance, it will be transmitted to the state for review and once the state finishes their review, it will return to you for second reading and final adoption. I'm here if you have any questions.
Questions?
No.
No questions? Do we, no public speakers, no questions, so we're ready for a, a voice vote? Do we need a motion, a motion?
So moved.
Okay, this is a roll call, Mayor. Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuvisant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading, second reading will be scheduled once we receive it back from the state.
Okay. Item seven?
9A.
9A. 9A.
9A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending Section 108-10, permit conditions of Chapter 108 of the City of Sunny Isles Beach Court of Ordinances entitled Beaches, to require permittees to maintain their respective beach chair presetting area and the area immediately surrounding the beach chair presetting area, free of junk, garbage, trash, litter debris, or other refuse material. Providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. And this is second and final reading.
I, Valerie, I had received an inquiry from a board, a board member about the intent of this, so I'd like to just ask that question. So the board member of one of our, of our condo buildings asked, it's unclear whether we are responsible to keep the area clean from our users and/or the general public. We only have control of the area from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, otherwise the area is open to the general public. Most days, our usage of the control area is quite small and the preset area is used by the public. Are you expecting us to clean the beach from the general public use?
If it's in their preset area that they control and maintain, then the answer is yes.
So we're talking about that, that section only?
That section only.
That's the 20% that they're, the responsibility?
My understanding, and maybe Susan can elaborate, when they get their permit, there's an actual diagram that they have a preset setting for, so it's a specific area that's delineated that they would have to maintain.
Okay, so that is, it is, it's a, it's a narrower area, but it is, it is a definite responsibility that we're placing on the, on the property owner? And so can we just re-articulate the whole, the whole policy or the purpose behind this ordinance was to create a greater responsibility for the cleanup and the beach integrity?
That's exactly it.
Is that, that's exactly the point?
That is accurate, yes.
Okay, so if, if there is a preset area, the, the responsibility does fall on the property owner, be it the condo association or whom, or the hotel operator that, there to keep that area clean?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that was the only, that was my comment. So we've pretty much gone through this, this ordinance. No public speakers, any comments from the, from the dais or we have a motion to? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, now that you bring that up and I'm reading, do we need to clarify on F at all times? Do we need to?
I think it's more of an enforcement issue. I don't think code enforcement is going to go out in the middle of the night to see if, whether there's debris in that area. So once they have their chairs out in that vicinity and there's any type of litter, that's when code enforcement would be enforcing it.
If I may, the intent is that at the end of the day, you know, at the end of after they remove their chairs, code enforcement is going to go by and just see that they cleaned up after that. If it's not cleaned up after they've removed their chairs, that's when that would go into effect. If it's clean after they remove their chairs and then at 9:00 at night, somebody's out there and makes a mess, that's not going to be their responsibility.
Okay, I think that helps. I think it's important to say, hey, we've got a new ordinance, we have a new responsibility or a heightened responsibility of the property owner, but again, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're clear on that, on the, on the line, the lines of responsibility. Okay. Comments, questions? So we, we're good? Okay, can we have a motion? Do we have a motion? So moved, Commissioner Lama, second, Commissioner Stivacent, this is a voice?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuvisant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Great. Okay, item 10, is this, we're on 10A?
We're resolutions, yes.
Yes.
10A. So 10A is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of software licensing and/or products from Superioron LLC. Chief Information Officer, Dirk?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. This item is the annual renewal of the police software maintenance for their CAD and Rex Management software that they use. We've been using it since 2007. And I believe the name of the company has changed, it's no longer Superioron, but Central Square, but we'll double check that. If you have any questions?
No questions, if you're happy, we're happy.
Can you just continue with updates to the same software, is that it?
Yes. We've actually recently updated the software on the mobile terminals?
Right.
And implemented some additional modules that PD wants their field, field training, we're working with them on e-citations. I believe at the last meeting, they came to ask for forfeiture approval to pay for the printers and iPads.
And at this point, there's no other superior software?
That is going to be something that we're going to be looking at because we did implement this 15 years ago now and several other municipalities have moved to a different system, but that, that will be something that we'll be looking at in the next year or two.
Okay, now how about we're bringing in all those quick ticket printers and all? Is, if we go to another software, will that be compatible?
That will be part of the process, we'll make sure that they won't have any disruption in their operations as part of that.
Question, you mentioned the same company, they just changed names?
Uh, yes, they were, I believe Central Square bought Superioron. But it's the same, it's the same, it's just changed ownership, yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Some move?
Some move? Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
There was no public comment? No public comment, no public speakers. Item 10B?
10B is a resolution authorizing the Chief of Police to expand partial forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice, federal forfeiture account for the subscription to a facial recognition database, electronic policing equipment, and temperature regulated evidence storage.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Manager. The Police Department is seeking to expand Department of Justice forfeiture funds to acquire a subscription to a facial recognition database for $7,495. This database will be helpful when attempting to identify suspects of criminal investigations by using open source data from the internet. We're also seeking approval to purchase Apple iPads for an amount not to exceed $17,000. This will also be used to, will be used to issue an iPad to every officer. This will improve the way we disseminate documents and digital evidence. The iPads have been used by supervisors and detectives and it's been very successful. Lastly, we're seeking purchase a refrigerator for the property and evidence room for the amount not to exceed $3,000. Our current refrigerator is very small and we need a larger one to ensure biological evidence is preserved correctly.
No public speaker, cards?
Make a motion?
Comments? Are we all, we like that facial recognition software, but we're not gonna, that's just for purposes of?
And it's, it's.
It's a limited, it's, it's of limited scope, our facial recognition.
It pulls from open source data from the internet, so it doesn't invade any privacy.
Okay, okay, well, no public speakers, no comments, if we have a, a motion, we like forfeiture?
Yes.
We like forfeiture expenditures, right?
Make a motion?
Motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item ten C.
Ten C is a resolution authorizing the purchase of four Polaris utility task vehicles and associated equipment from McKibben Motorsports.
Once again, the Police Department is seeking approval to expend fifty-three thousand seven hundred and eight dollars with McKibben Motorsports to purchase four Polaris utility task vehicles. These vehicles will be used by our Ocean Rescue Division to patrol the beaches.
No public speakers, these are all budgeted UTVs?
Yes, correct, because we're going over fifty, we're here tonight.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item ten D.
Ten D is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of building department vehicles from DeValve Ford.
Mr. Parker.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. Staffer, I am in the approval of this resolution. Due to high demand for hybrid vehicles, as well as the supply chain issues, we are requesting the City Commission to authorize the expenditure funds adequately budgeted in the building department's budget for the purchase of four Ford Escape hybrid vehicles in amount of not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Currently, Ford has a very narrow ordering period of time, due to such constraints, we, the department was unable to secure the purchase of the two thousand twenty-three Fords, and by attaining the commission's approval tonight, department will be able to request an issuance of a P O to secure the purchase of two thousand twenty-four models when they become available. And this is done by utilizing the Florida Sheriff's Association's light vehicle contract listed below.
So, we have to wait a little bit?
We have to wait a little bit, and we do, we have four two thousand and fifteen vehicles that really need replaced.
Okay, so by that time, they'll be nine years old, so.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's, you have dog life, and now you have car life, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Nine years, okay. Budgeted items, we have no public speakers, unless we have any comments from the commission? We have a, a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Vice Mayor Viscara, second, Commissioner Lama, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and they're hybrid.
Hybrid, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item ten E.
Ten E is a resolution approving an agreement with B.C. Remen, I'm sorry, I don't pronounce that, B.C. Remen Holdings LLC, doing business as forever long for the installation of artificial turf in the dog park section of Senator Gwynmore Golds Park.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. I'm not used to this, okay. So, the Culture and Community Services Department is recommending that we transition our dog park to, from sod to artificial turf. We require a lot of maintenance on our sod, and it closes down the park on occasion to our residents, so we are asking for funds not to exceed a hundred and four thousand dollars and six hundred and nineteen, I'm sorry, a hundred and four thousand dollars, six hundred and nineteen seventy-six cents. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
So, this is called the bone zone, is that? Where, where did that, that's the, that's the first time I've heard of the bone zone?
I don't, I don't. Can I bring it with, can I, I just brought it with me, I'm not really sure.
I, I.
I think that's the name on the area of the park.
Do you, do you, do you, have you seen the bone zone? Because that's a first for me, so, so the bone zone, okay.
The bone zone.
And so, we're having a lot of maintenance issues?
We are.
Is this a new trend, to go to artificial turf on, for dog parks? I thought they're supposed to be?
They are, and a lot of cities in Miami-Dade County are transitioning to artificial turf, because it's really hard to keep sod, maintain the sod.
Uh-huh, and this is an easy cleanup factor?
It is an easy cleanup, little hose, water down, should be very simple.
Okay.
Yes.
I could attest that when it rains, it becomes very muddy there, and it's a mess, it's a mess, yeah, yeah. I play there sometimes.
Susan, the bone zone?
I just have a question.
That's what it was named, when it was dedicated.
Material on the artificial turf, I know there's been issues with, you know, cancer causing the products and all, and some, you know, some soccer players were having problems and all, on some of their, uh, asphalt turf, or whatever it was, they were using, has anyone looking to composition of this turf?
Yeah, the composition is all eco-friendly, so it's very environmentally friendly and safe, yes.
Are there a lot of dogs in this bone zone? Because that's, that's old news to me, so, okay.
There's a ton of dogs, yes.
Yeah, it gets, it gets used.
It definitely gets used.
Okay, all right, well, it's, it's good to know, because we're definitely spending some money on this turf, so.
Lots of dogs are very happy.
Okay, so, the dogs are, you know, if the dogs are happy, the residents are, okay. We have no public speaker comments, so we have any, any other comments from our commission?
I had never heard of artificial turf for, for a dog park.
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, as long, the dogs like it, yeah, do they? I mean, they, I guess they just like being outside anyway, so, and, and, yeah, I mean, if it's gonna make that experience better, and the dogs are happy, the owners are happy, quality of life all around, right?
Yes.
So, so, okay, okay.
Thank you. Do we have a, do we need a motion here? Do we, are we gonna?
So moved.
So moved, to approve?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item ten F.
Ten F is a resolution approving a first amendment to agreement with VisualScape for landscaping services for city parks and recreational facilities.
Sorry, I'm back. So, in two thousand and twenty, the city issued an RFP with a park landscape contractor, VisualScape, who was awarded the bid, and the Senate, city entered into a two-year agreement or contract with them, with the option to renew. So, we are looking to exercise our right to renew for the next year. They are asking for an increase in materials and personnel, they're asking for a five percent increase to cur, to the current fee schedules, as permitted per the agreement, and the increase to the contractor's monthly ongoing services to thirty thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars a month.
No, no public, no public speakers? It's the sign of the times.
Sign of the times, yeah.
Any comments from the commission, or we have a motion?
I did ask a few questions about this one, and I know it's gonna be for one more year, because next year.
Commissioner Stuvasan, could you?
Next year, we are gonna do a full bid request, right?
Yes.
For the two, okay.
Yes. It's just, it's just a contractual, that they have, they're, they're authorized under the contract to have this increase, right?
They are.
And this is their last?
Last year. It is. Yes, next year, we will go out for a bid for?
Correct.
For the park landscape.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item ten G.
Ten G is a resolution approving change order number one to the agreement with Musco Sports Lighting for the installation of field lighting at Senator Gwynmore Golds Park.
Gail?
Gail.
Oh, Rick. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and staff. This change order is basically to comply with some additional costs to meet our building department wind load design calculations for the lightings that's gonna go up at the park.
We do have Jason from Musco here, if you have any very specific questions.
Yes, so this was, this is just the wind load calculation that, that's causing this, this is dictated through our internal protocol?
Yeah, we're in the building permit process, and this is one of the comments, we require a higher wind load than was originally anticipated.
Okay.
So, there's a few dollars more to increase the basis, size of the pole basis.
So, beyond the, what the cost factor is, when are we getting, because I've been asked by residents, when are the, when is the lighting coming? Are we gonna go through another season without our lights?
Sure. So, we, we're not gonna change any delivery dates, we caught this early enough, so the plan is to deliver the equipment, I believe it's the end of October, sorry, end of November. So, we're.
October, November?
That sounds good.
That would be better, because the residents.
I do think it's October, so, let me double check, but I remember, did the email that you said October?
It's November, and you'll, you'll have it ready for us by Christmas.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, that's our, that's our, our Christmas gift, right?
Yes.
We're gonna have soccer, lighted soccer field.
Yes, yes, this is gonna be a really nice project.
But it's, other than that, we're, we're on schedule for?
Yes, it's just the, the contract calls for exposure C, and Rick and the city, their qualifications are exposure D as part of the Florida Building Code.
Fair enough, okay, all right.
This one's gonna make people really happy.
Yes. Yes, they're, they're.
And they're waiting for.
They are, the, the families are waiting for this.
And it's getting darker earlier, so.
Yes, so we wanna, with all due speed.
Great.
Okay. Do we have a, no public speakers, do we have a motion?
Motion.
So moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Keep moving along.
Thank you.
You wanna get those lights for Christmas?
Yes.
Different kind of Christmas light.
Or before.
Yes, different kind of lights. Item ten H.
Ten H is a resolution approving a project agreement with Rodriguez Architects to provide professional architectural services for a new structure at the property located at Bella Vista Park.
Good evening, this is, at the park, we decided to add a marine patrol building, and this is engaging the architect to provide those services for us. This is the same architect that's working on the Ritz Park, or the Intercolst Sports Flex Park, plus the TCP Meditation Garden Park, so they're part of that, this team.
Can you just describe a little bit, this, this, this concept of having this marine patrol office, and how that's gonna work, and, you know, where that's gonna be situated, or?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna utilize the existing concrete slab that's out there, try to fit.
And we're referring to Bella Vista Park, which is the park on the, the far south western end of the city, correct?
No, Bella Vista.
Bella Vista, Bella Vista, the south.
It's on the bridge.
Right, a hundred sixty.
Third.
Yeah, a hundred south.
One sixty-third street.
Yeah, one sixty-third, all the way to the, all the way to the west.
To the, on the water, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's an existing concrete slab that's been there, we're gonna utilize that slab as a, as a foundation, put up a, basically, concrete block building, metal tin roof, have offices for the police, marine patrol unit, have some private showers, have some public bathrooms, have some storage area for their gear and equipment, also have potentially an office area to run kayak rentals or something like that out of it, have a little covered seating zone where we can, you know, offer, offer seating, and the police can do some, like seminar training stuff there also.
And so, we'll be housing our marine boats, and marine patrol, and possibly other, as well, through, through that, through that area?
Yes, along the dock side, we're gonna add the lifts for the marine, for the marine patrol boats, possibly some jet skis, we're planning that aspect of it, so this is to do the building side of it.
Okay, so we're gonna have that infrastructure there?
Yes.
Okay, okay, no public comments?
I have one question, timeframe, when do you think we're gonna have it ready? Like, one year, ten months?
For, for the whole park?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, this time next year, we should be wrapping it up.
Okay, good.
From the engineering, or from the entire, from the vertical construction?
Probably all of it, I mean, we have to go through permitting on a seawall, which will be somewhat, that's somewhat of a hard target to gauge, because it goes to Miami-Dade, but hopefully, we should have everything in place.
Good, and the docks are?
Pretty much finished.
Finished, the docks are finished, it's just now, it's the seawall, and now we're putting, housing us, we're putting a structure in.
We're trying to get final electrical service installed, that's the only thing left on the docks.
Okay.
So, we're coordinating with FPL to tie into the transformer that's in that area.
Okay, any, any other comments, or we have a motion?
No, I, I, yeah, second.
So moved, Commissioner Lama, seconded, Vice Mayor Viscara, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ten I, we've, we've heard, ten J.
Ten J is a resolution authorizing an increase in the, excuse me, authorizing an increase to the purchase order with Amazon for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners and City Manager's Office. This item is requesting additional spend authority with Amazon for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, for an amount not to exceed of thirty thousand.
Per grand?
Per grand, total amount of eighty-five thousand dollars.
Seems pretty straightforward, no public speakers?
Motion.
Any comments or a motion?
Make a motion, yes.
Commissioner Stuyvesant, second?
Second.
Commissioner Lama, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item ten K.
Ten K is a resolution ratifying an agreement and the expenditure of budgeted funds with IM Electric for emergency streetlight repairs.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff. We are asking you to ratify for our emergency streetlight repairs, two resolutions, we're gonna do this one and the next one. This is for the labor to install the new transformers, replace some wiring, do some CAD weld to the grounds, and some waterproof connectors that were necessary to basically shore up our light poles and make them more able to withstand storms and inclement weather, et cetera.
So, what happened?
We had city staff inspect the poles, and they felt that some of the materials in the poles were not up to our standards and could be safety hazards. Specifically, what started the concerns were the transformers were failing. The transformers are required to convert power from the four eighty power that runs those lights down to one twenty. The one twenty is used to power Christmas lights and any other ancillary things that are put on those poles, decorative. When those transformers started to fail, we looked, we had our electrician look at it, and he also then called in the electrical inspector from the building department, who voiced some concerns about some of the materials in the poles and the way that they were specifically wired. For example, up in the luminaire arms, there were some splices they felt were inappropriate, that those should be single wires from top to bottom of pole, to, just for, basically, even if a luminaire arm started to come down, a wire would prevent it from falling, that type of thing. So, they found some safety concerns, things that they were just worried about, so we took immediate action to buy the materials, which is the next item we're gonna come to, and this is the company that, A, removed the transformers, and now is reinstalling and doing the rewiring. That's what the bucket trucks are seeing out on the streets right now with the MOT, with the traffic control, with the police officer, as they're going from pole to pole. There are a hundred and twenty-six of those poles on. There are 126 of those poles on Collins Avenue and it was deemed that each and every one of the 126 had the same concerns. So we are making sure that those are done correctly.
So these were the streetlights that were ordered in connection with the, with the whole undergrounding, correct?
They were installed during the undergrounding project, yes.
And so we've just recently uncovered that they are, there's some obviously design or product defect issues?
Correct, and we're working on the legal side of that separately.
Right.
Understood.
And the contract going back to when?
I'm sorry?
The original contract dates back to when?
Susan? That project's been going on since I was here the first time from 13 to 18, so this is a long-term project with a lot of work for many, many years.
This is not a recent contract that this administration would have signed?
No, this is an older contract and there's going to be shared responsibilities here amongst various parties. There's no pointing blame at one particular party for this. Various materials were approved to be used by one person and then another saying, no, we want to make sure that what is in those poles is appropriate now to current standards, so we are not taking any chances with the safety of our residents or those lights.
So we received some comments, some of the residents are, have been commenting that, you know, we've had this, a little bit of the, the lane, there's been an impediment, right, to the, to the lanes?
Correct.
But this is really done, we're servicing this for, for a, a specific and important objective?
Correct, we have that vendor right now working seven days a week and they are working from early in the morning until it gets dark. They cannot do this in the dark, this is not a project that can be done at night because the poles are actually being disassembled. We do have them working seven days a week so that at least on the weekends, they're trying to do anywhere between three and five poles a day. And during the weekends, when there's less traffic, at least there is less impediment to the residents. So we were lucky enough to secure a vendor that's willing to do this work on weekends and not charge us a premium for doing that work on weekends, but he is also during the week, working. So as many poles as they can get done from day to day, our police department is providing an officer at all times behind that bucket truck and we know it's an inconvenience, but it must be done and we're trying to minimize that as much as possible by continuing through the weekend work.
Right, I mean, it's pretty well organized, but there has been, there have been comments to, to the effect of, why can't you do this at the midnight shift, but clearly it's not the kind of work that you can be doing at, on a midnight shift, so as to alleviate some...
They're black gold and you can't see inside them very well to be doing the wiring, so even with, even with bright lighting, it would just be a dangerous thing to be doing at night and it, it's just more appropriate unfortunately for this vendor to be working during the day.
So we have 126 light poles and we are now, how far along are we in, in this?
I do not know the count, he's targeting to be done by the second week in November, at the latest, with 126.
That's excellent progress.
Some days he can get three done, some days it can get five, it just depends on how things are going. Some poles will have a bolt that's corroded that takes them an extra hour or two to get a bolt out to get the luminaire head off. So you never know what they're going to encounter as they touch these poles, we're in a coastal city with a lot of corrosion. And so as they go, they, if they find a bolt that's not appropriate, they actually replace that, that we want to make sure that when these parts are put back together, that they're secure for a number of years again.
So the bottom line is we're servicing what was procured many years ago as opposed to having to replace all of the, all of these streetlights?
Correct, we want to make sure that they stay in service for a long period of time. After this project is complete, you're going to see an item come back for annual servicing, to where these are monitored and serviced each year to make sure that all of these things remain safe. And we don't have any more larger repairs, but we'll have an annual servicing instead.
Okay, those are my questions. So are we going to, we going to, Mauricio, can we take these two items together?
Yes, let me just read that, second item into the record.
10K and 10L, unless we have any of the comments, if we can take those two together, can we have a motion?
Hold on, Mayor, let me read the 10L into the record. So 10L is a resolution ratifying a purchase order and the expenditure budgeted funds with Anexter Inc. for the emergency streetlight repairs.
And those would be for the materials. The first one's for your labor, for your vendor that's doing the work. The second one is for purchase of various wire transformers and other electrical components that are needed.
Okay, okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Joseph, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item 10M.
10M is a resolution qualifying and shortlisting firms to provide landscape architectural services on an as-needed basis.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission, the city issued RFQ number 22-06-01 for landscape architect services. This has been under contract through Catherine O'Leary Richards Design Associates for several years. Her contract was expiring, she did not have any more renewals, so we went out to bid. We have shortlisted the top four firms and we are entering into an agreement with each of them on an as-needed basis. Those are Vermelho, Ajamil and Partners, Calvin Giordano and Associates, Keith and Associates, and Miller Legg and Associates.
Kathy O'Leary, did she read?
She did not bid this time around, no. This work, we use, we, we were using her for our landscape contractor management, so she would do the reviews of their work and provide monthly reports on deficiencies or what needs to be done, as well as special design services for small projects. And a lot of work doing planning and zoning review, permit review, inspections, things like that, some of which is reimbursed through the applicant. But it was quite a huge workload, so, and she does it for multiple cities. So as our work has grown, she did not bid.
Understood. And one of these, one of these on the approved list designed our PCP, correct?
Correct, Miller Legg and Associates.
Seems like these, multiple of these, of these firms have done work for the city in various...
They have, and Keith and Associates is also shortlisted through CCNA for engineering services.
Okay, so, but this is as needed, this is just to give you the, the shortlist?
Correct, so Amy may choose one firm for, you know, what she means through P&amp;Z and Fabrizio may choose another firm for landscape maintenance inspections, Gail may choose another one for, you know, park inspections and...
How many, how many, how many bid, just these four or there were multiple others?
There was a total of six.
Okay.
One, when we asked for more information, they decided, they declined, they asked to be removed from consideration. And another one was found to be not responsive.
Okay, okay. No public speaker comments, any comments from the dais? That's it? Okay, do we have a motion? So moved, Commissioner Lama, do we have a second?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's our next item here? That's 10M?
10N.
And 10N.
Is a resolution approving change order number four to the UN with the staff group for the construction of the Golden Shores utility undergrounding project.
Honorable Mayor, on behalf of Paul Abbott, who couldn't be with us tonight, part of the undergrounding project included some drainage improvements and as they are working through the neighborhood, they are going to make drainage improvements as they go along. So just like the Central Island project we talked about earlier, this is to avoid having to dig up the road twice, so it'll be more convenient for the residents who live there. So there's two areas that this particular change order addresses. One is 185th and Atlantic and one is 189th and Atlantic. And then there's a couple other smaller areas, so those two areas are not currently connected to our pump station. This will connect it to the pump station, so it'll bring the water out of there. And then there's two smaller, at least two smaller areas, but they're still looking at the rest that will be coming before you later. But because they're getting near 189th, we wanted to get this to you right away.
I'd just like to say that as I've been driving around after rains, we've been, I've been working with the city manager to connect existing sewers, to install a new sewer on the opposite side of the street where it's flooding, so that we should have a, a well-drained Golden Shores very shortly.
I have also received comments from the Golden Shores neighborhoods, anticipating that this will continue with the level of improvements for that, for the drainage for that area.
Yes.
Okay. No public speakers, any comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 10O.
10O is a resolution ratifying the approval and execution of the opioid settlement participation agreement and the assignment of the city's allocation of opioid settlement funds to Miami Dade County.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, the state of Florida entered into a settlement with the opioid litigation and the city was to be assigned $31,000 to be spread out over 18, 18 years, which would have given us about $1,800 per year. And we have elected to assign that to the county because we would have had to have created some sort of opiate, opioid remediation program. And annual report.
No public speakers, so we don't really, unlike other municipalities, we don't seem to have that level of, that issue in our city.
Bingo.
It's that other municipalities as well has, have also assigned their monies to the county because the county has an active program. And we, we do not, but we would have to create one in order to receive and process these funds.
So it's a more cost-effective solution, more cost-effective solution to addressing?
Correct.
No public speakers, I have no comments, any, any comments from the dais? Motion? Can I hear a motion?
Motion.
So moved, Commissioner Joseph, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lama, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 10P.
10P is a resolution ratifying the declaration of local emergency imposed by the city manager on September 27th, 2022 and the termination of local emergency issued on September 29th, 2022 due to Hurricane Ian.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this was related to Hurricane Ian. I declared a local state of emergency and terminated it, thankfully not soon after. This would have allowed us to do some emergency procurement should we have needed in the storm. Thankfully we did not, so I did not use those emergency powers to purchase anything.
Open and shut, no public speakers, no public speaker cards. There any comments, otherwise a motion?
Let me get more.
Commissioner Stuyvesant, moves, second?
Yes, second.
Commissioner Joseph, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 10Q.
10Q is a resolution approving an in-kind donation to the Norman S. Edelcup Sunny Islands Beach K-38 school, in a manner that exceeds $9,958 for 125 Stop the Bleed kit cabinets.
Okay, so at the July commission meeting, we approved the donation of 125 Stop the Bleed kits and instructional posters at the Norman S. Edelcup K-8 school and we received direction on behalf of the school principal, on behalf of the school board, requiring cabinets to also be installed. So we couldn't install the kits without the cabinets, so that being the case, the cabinets offer protection, they provide a designated area for the teachers, staff and students to locate the kits easily and quickly in the event of an emergency and the total cost of the cabinets is $9,558. Funds are budgeted and available in the donation account. So it's basically completing the, the, the project transaction so that we can install these Stop the Bleed kits in the, in our school, so. I advocate for completing this process so that we can get our Stop the Bleed kits properly installed in our school.
And I, yeah, before the motion, I would like to request the same for our high school, for Alonson Tracy Morning. I know that we've been in communication with the principal also in our school, in the high school, and they are in much need of having access to the same kind of kit, so I would like to consider that for the next commission meeting if we can put it in the agenda to...
We may as well include, I think, north as well.
No, the thing is that our children goes to Alonson Tracy Morning by default, that's our high school. Like all our kids, once they finish here in Norman Edelcup, they go there, we have the buses, bus in there, et cetera. And I believe we should give the same kind of benefit that we are giving to our K-38, to our high schoolers as well. So it's a smaller school and I believe it's, if anything, they're in a bigger risk of anything bad happening. So I would love to consider again to give you the same benefit that we're giving to our K-28, to our high schoolers.
We can, we can entertain that at the, at a subsequent meeting, but we're, we're here for the, for the specific purpose of approving this, this item.
And I would like also to make a motion or second, Commissioner Joseph, motion for this.
So we have a second?
Absolutely, yeah.
And all in favor?
Aye.
So we have now Stop the Bleed kits and that it will be properly installed in our schools. Great, thank you so much to my colleagues.
I'd just like to say that every school should have these kits.
Absolutely.
And they do in Miami Beach and in other municipalities, so it's time for us to step up to the plate, so to speak.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item 12B is a discussion item?
No, Mayor, we have the add-on 10R.
The add-on?
So 10R is a resolution correcting a scrivener's error in resolution number 2022-3401 to reflect the correct not to exceed amount. So basically, at last month's meeting, the commission approved a resolution for a First Amendment to an agreement with Keith and Associates who are doing upgrades to the Town Center Park. The resolution itself contained a small error. It's not in the actual amount that the commission approved for that First Amendment, rather it's in the total aggregate amount between the original contract amount and the First Amendment amount. So basically, the resolution listed it as 37,720, when in reality it should have been 38,620. So the resolution just corrects that.
How much, what's the dollar amount, a total?
It's a difference of $900.
Okay, well, we have to correct the scrivener's error, okay. Always perfection. Okay, I don't anticipate much discussion on this item, so...
So I...
That being the case, can we have, can we have a motion to approve?
Yes, I will make a motion.
So moved, Commissioner Lama, second, Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're on to the discussion item?
Yes, discussion item 12A.
Discussion 12A.
Which is the composting program.
Ah, the composting program, I want to hear about this.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Commission. My name is Nick Revaz and I am the Sustainability Intern here at Sunny Islands Beach. I come before you tonight to advocate for the adoption of a composting program here in Sunny Islands Beach. If approved, the city would partner with Compost for Life, a local composting pickup service, to institute two 64-gallon composting bins at Gateway Park, the future site of our upcoming farmers markets to be held every Wednesday starting November 2nd. If the scheduled weekly pickups prove to be a success in the community, we plan after six months to expand to six total pickup stations, spread throughout our city in order to bring composting to a greater portion of our community. Composting is the natural process of recycling organic matter, such as leaves and food scraps, into a valuable fertilizer that can enrich soil and plants. Some of the benefits include reducing food waste and the subsequent methane landfill emission, or landfill methane emissions, improving soil health, promoting healthy diets and supporting the local economy. The company we hope to partner with, Compost for Life, would provide us with regular reports detailing the pounds of food waste diverted from landfills, as well as the option to receive monthly compost deliveries, which we could disperse in our local gardens, parks, or however else we see fit. This program represents just one of many avenues for promoting environmental stewardship and eco-friendly lifestyles in our city. Composting would also under... Composting would also underscore a continued devotion to our e-committed campaign, which has made monumental strides in the past, including our Skip the Straw ordinance, as well as our installment of solar-powered park benches. In order for us to continue changing the way people view their sense of responsibility to the environment, to each other, and to future generations, we need to act as a unit and continue to develop projects that will engage our entire community. And part, and this partnership with Compost for Life would be no different. In the short time that I've worked here as a sustainability intern, I've learned a great deal about our carbon emissions and our impact on the environment through our greenhouse gas inventory. Now that we have identified our problem areas, we must shift our focus to climate action planning efforts that will achieve these emissions reductions and put us on track to reach our carbon neutrality goal by 2050 as part of our commitment to the Paris Climate Agreement. This composting initiative is a great example of a community-led solution to enhance our climate resilience agenda, and I hope to be a part of many more sustainability initiatives going forward. Thank you. And we also have the founder of Compost for Life here, Francisco Torres. If you have any questions about the company, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's great.
Thank you.
Good job. So, thank you so much for coming. I'm very, very happy to see this and very excited about this. How is this, how is this implemented and have you done this with other municipalities? And how's, how's that working?
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you very much for having me here. Yeah, Compost for Life, we're a compost community initiative. We operate a farm in the redlands in Colder Bay, and we have partnered, partnered already with El Portal, as an example, as a municipality, but we support more than 300 families.
Can you speak in the mic so we can hear you?
Yeah.
The audience can hear you?
Yeah, we support more than 300 families across Miami Dade County that we provide, like, you know, composting services, and we also support more than 35 businesses. And the way it works is that we provide a container, we have different sizes from five-gallons, 32, and 64, and we come on a weekly basis to collect those containers and drop off the clean ones, okay? So we do an exchange. We take those sorts of food scraps, we take it to a farm, which is our source of nitrogen, and we mix it with our carbon source, which it would be more like mulch or yard trimmings, tree trimmings, and in a matter of 120 days, we turn it into rich compost material that could be used for home gardening, community gardens, also for our local farmers. And we have it available to you, who are like, you know, would be part of the program, as well to community gardens that we can support, and we tend to donate this finished compost, okay? So the idea here is that we come together as a community to do the right thing for our ecosystem and our environment.
And so people bring, what, cartons and containers of things like coffee grinds or orange peels, or it has to be organic materials, and they can bring it in a plastic bag, or they have to have a container, or just, people are coming in, they're coming to the farmer's market or just throughout the week, and there's a specific bin or an area, and then they, they, they deposit, basically, they're just there. Is there any issue about, like, contamination, or the wrong, you know, inorganic materials, or how that, you know what I mean? How do we train, if we, if we adopt this, how do we train our residents to really, you know, do it in the right fashion?
Absolutely, so we offer compost talks, okay, and training, where we basically focus on creating awareness and understanding in what items need to be composted. So you're right, coffee grounds, tea bags, fruits, veggies, legumes, pasta, coffee beans, rice, we accept all those. We don't take animal proteins, we don't take greases, oils, you can put dairy, but it's very easy. Basically, you can bring it on your own paper bag, let's say you go to a supermarket and you can use your paper bag. We also have kitchen caddies that we can offer, and we have compostable liners that you can use. So the idea here is to really have this drop-off stations where our residents can bring their food scraps and place them there. If we are to find some type of contamination, we would take a picture, and we have a specific software to, to what we do, and then you, like, you know, main point of contact, we receive a notification saying, hey, we're getting contamin, contaminants, and then we establish that channel of communication.
Is this for, is this primarily for residents, or do businesses get it, like, say restaurants that have excess foodstuffs, instead of throwing that in the garbage? Like, can the restaurants, can they participate, or the, the, you know, the hospitality, or the, and do they participate in this type of a program?
Yeah, absolutely, so we support different hotels, hospitals, universities, and even schools, so we support commercial and residential services.
I would take that from restaurants and hotels. You would have less contamination than from private residences?
Absolutely, because they tend to start on the back of the house where all the prepping is taking place.
Right.
So it's much easier, it's like much cleaner compost.
Right, so if you get one plastic bag, plastic bags are contaminant.
Absolutely.
Do you have any, any relationships with any hotels or businesses in Sunny Isles Beach?
No, but we service the one hotel in Miami Beach, as well as Soho House. So those two are the ones that we service in the area.
I have no sense of proportion or anything, so I, I'm trying to envision what 64-gallon bin looks like. Is it like the podium? Is it kind of like?
Yeah, it's like the standard one that you see around, and the ones that we use are designed to handle organic material.
Does it, does, do they smell, do they have special lids?
Yeah, so the way it closes keeps odors out, okay, or like, keeps odors in, and it's just, as long as you keep it closed, there's not going to be any issue. And the compost that we receive, we don't take animal protein, so that really minimizes the odor that it can generate. So we've been doing this for already two years, and we have diverted more than 350 tons of food waste from landfills, which has a great impact in our community and our environment.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think it's awesome, but that's big, so I like, I think we, it's time to, as we incrementally, you know, develop our e-committed program, I think this is a perfect.
Does it has any cost for us, like, anything we have to pay from the city?
Yeah, I put a proposal together because, because it's a service that we provide.
I have a question, so I'm, I'm looking at the proposal, so I see that's five 64-gallon bins or containers. You mentioned, Nick, that we'll place them at Gateway during farmers' market?
Yes, so that proposal was just kind of a general guideline originally, that was, that was the plan, and then we kind of amended when we would have, we, we decided on two bins for six months at Gateway to, we'll have the pickups, I guess, the day after the farmers' markets, and then based on the community involvement in those Gateway markets, then we plan to add four more bins throughout the rest of the city, so six total. And that would be for the last six months of the year. And so, price-wise, we budgeted $10,000 for the year. The, the first six months would cost us $2,220, and the last six months would be $6,090 for a total cost of $8,310. And then the.
Plus the setup fee?
That, the setup fee is included in that.
Oh, it's included, okay.
So the, the additional room in the budget would be in case of contamination fees.
Oh, I see, okay.
Thirty dollars for incident.
Per incident?
Yes.
So if someone throws? If someone throws a plastic bag into a container, that's a $30 fee?
Yes, but at the beginning, like, and that's something we can put together, basically, like, the first, you know, two, three weeks, there is a learning curve, you know, so we really don't implement a contamination fee, but if, if we see that it's something that is reoccurring, then we need to implement a contamination fee because unfortunately that's the way we learn, you know?
Right.
So we try not to implement it, but there are situations, you know, that we, that will happen, okay?
If I may add, the initial concept is of having it at Gateway Market, for the farmer's market, is that the bin would be there at a tent with an info booth about all of our e-committed initiatives, and there'd be someone there to receive it, to make sure that.
It's not contaminated.
It's not contaminated.
Yeah.
That's the goal. If we expand it to have more throughout the city, that's different because we can't watch every bin.
Right.
But for this initial potential phase, it would be, you know, there monitored, and then they would come pick it up the next day, so we're not sitting there with a smelly bin, purple.
And one thing that has worked very well in our communities is that we implement, we can implement a lock, a combination lock, so whoever is going to drop off their compost would know the lock, and then they can drop it off. So in that way, we prevent anyone walking by thinking that it's just regular garbage, that they contaminate the compost, okay? So it's just an idea.
And there are, we had found there are some compostable plastic bags, right? There's certain ones, so if the Commission, you know, if this is something that you wanted to do, we could have those bags available to residents, so that when they bring it, they're bringing it in the proper bag, so that we're not having the contamination.
That would be, I think, ideal, because I'm sure people would like to participate, that would like to participate, that would be a big, that would be a better incentive to have those, those, you know, those compatible, compatible bags.
So you're basically taking vegetables, no chicken bones, no nothing like that?
Yeah, no, no.
No animal products?
Animal protein, yes. Even though that is compostable, we don't take it because the odors that could bring to a container, and also to our farm.
So you're really limiting your intake as well?
Yes, but typically, you know, most of the food waste that we see is non-animal protein.
Right, okay, so the products, let's say that from gardeners, right?
Yes.
They take away a lot that goes to landfills now. You would take that as?
As long as you.
Compost?
As long as it's free of pesticides and herbicides, yes, we could take it.
You don't mean, you mean like tree and?
Branches?
No.
Yeah, that's what, that's what they compost. The thing is to get it ground up, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That's what you want.
Yeah, so we do have landscapers that come to our farm and basically dump mulch.
Right, because right now, that all goes to the landfill.
Exactly, yes, in some cases, yes.
But how would you know, like, for example, let's say you have a condo, right, and they do their branch trimming, their pre-hurricane branch trimming. They can bring it, they can just dump it in, in the, in that 64-gallon bin, they can?
That would never fit.
We, we.
Well, whatever, let's say we chop it up into little pieces. Can we, can we put it in, in the, in the, in there, and then how do you know if it's got pesticide or no pesticide?
Yeah, in theory, you could, but we, we focus only on food waste, okay?
So you're focusing on food waste?
Yeah.
Vegetable food waste?
The idea is to prevent food waste from ending in landfills.
But you see, this is what I brought up before the Commission before. Cities, certain cities have ordinances against people spraying their lawns, which, I know, I have neighbors that, on windy days, I can't walk outside because they just sprayed their lawn with Roundup or whatever, and it's just poison.
But isn't that county, isn't there a county ordinance?
That's for, that's for.
Didn't we already go do that?
And then it gets into our bay and everything, I mean, but it's just.
But we pass an ordinance for that?
There's a county ordinance for pesticides, but it's at certain times of the year.
Yeah, certain times of the year, it should be full.
It's a different, it's not the same thing.
It should be full on, because these things are just poisoning people they don't even realize.
So I, I have a question, so, so you, you take the vegetable, organic vegetable material, let's say, and then you take it back to headquarters, and you make fertilizer out of that, what, what other products do you make from, from the composting?
So compost, compost is a natural process. What we do is we take yard trims or tree trimmings, mulch, and food scraps.
And food scraps.
Plus oxygen, so we keep that process completely aerobic. Contrary to a landfill, in the landfill, they follow what it would be, an aerobic conditions. So here, in a matter of 120, 150 days, we have rich compost, like finished compost. And I actually have some in my car, if you want to see it.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, but you see.
Like fermentation, yeah, yeah. And then, Nick, you mentioned that they could bring it back to us, fertilizer, and then we could use it for our landscaping needs, then?
Yeah, but the problem is, if you have people, if you're going to start taking in clippings and things like this, and people are spraying their lawns with poisons, then you're.
No, but I think he, right now, they're concentrating on, on vegetable, vegetable products, yeah.
I think if we, if we agree, I think we would be best served to just focus on the organic.
I think we start with vegetable products, yeah.
On the fruits and the vegetables and the organic materials, and not worry about
mulch and, and your.
Yeah, but then also, if you're not dealing with organic vegetables, right? And you're having vegetables that are also sprayed with pesticides.
To a certain degree, but we take all food waste, we take all food waste. Not, not organic vegetables.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, though, but you're still taking in.
Pesticides.
Pesticides.
Yeah.
And then you're, right? So your compost is not organic.
In theory, not, but we're still eating the food, right?
Yeah, but it's not organic, you see?
Yeah.
You order garbage in, garbage out, right?
Yeah.
You know? If you're, if you're taking in unclean material, then you're going to give us back unclean material.
Of course.
But, I mean, yeah, but I mean, it's still organic, you know, it's just.
It's not organic, you can't say.
Well, not organic, I mean, organic, let's say, in the makeup, I'm saying, it's got some pesticide.
Natural products. Call it, call it.
Organic.
Natural product.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Natural products.
Natural product, yeah, let's say a natural, yeah, from nature.
I think Keith Oliver would appreciate the mulch, the, the fertilizer we would get for the butterfly.
Okay, now, let me ask you a question, do you work with supermarkets? Like, do you work with public, so I'm sure that they throw out a lot of vegetables that are going bad, and fruits and all that, yeah?
Yeah, the only supermarket that we're supporting now is Millam's Market.
Yeah, they're very involved, yeah, they're very, very, very responsive, yeah. You work with the one here?
No, right now, we're doing Pine Crest.
Pine Crest, okay, okay.
So then it works synergistically, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, great.
Okay, I, I'm all for it, I like it.
We'll just have to look at the details of the proposal, see how we started, and.
We just want to give direction to the.
Yes.
City manager.
I think we have consensus to follow it up a little bit further.
A more, a more formalized proposal, do we have consensus?
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm.
I'm for it.
I'd like to see more, I'd like to see more.
And we will start with one location, right?
We would start with just Gateway Market, so just on Wednesday nights, starting in November, November 2nd, Wednesday night, we'll have Gateway Market, food market with entertainment, everything else, bring your kitchen.
Compost.
Compost, the media team will do some outreach.
Bring your coffee grinds.
Education, we'll have information at that booth that day, so that people will know for the future. If this is something we're doing, we'll get the bags. It's really, really geared for that event, so you can come and drop off your used and pick up new.
Okay, I like it.
Okay.
Get your fertilizer.
Fertilizer will be a whole different day, in different ways.
Um, great initiative.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may.
Thank you.
Before Nick leaves, I just want to share that he got a great compliment yesterday from the ESAC Committee. Nick's doing a great job, and they're very happy with them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, excellent.
Good work.
Very good.
Thank you.
And here, I thought you were the quiet one, like, hello, hello, you know, all right? That's good, man, good job.
There you see.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very happy.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 12, now we're on 12B?
12B is the Blue Light Safety Program.
Okay.
We have here John from the Transportation Solutions Lighting, and he has a little presentation for us, so we want to hear the presentation and then we can have the discussion. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. My name is John Decepolo from Transportation Solutions and Lighting, based out of Boca Raton, Florida. Is there a- Is there a clicker?
It should be, oh, bringing it up.
There you go. Does it have batteries?
If you're gonna help you-
Tell them we moved it from the base.
Okay, you can change the page. We'll do it this way. All right. So Transportation Solutions and Lighting is a family-owned, minority-owned business based out of Boca Raton, Florida. We've been here for twenty-five years and we focus specifically on customer service. It's really important that our customers understand what we provide and that we'll be on-site for any problems. Twenty-four hours or less, we guarantee that for the state of Florida. Uh, we do offer a number of varieties when it comes to emergency notification solutions. Uh, we are the official dealer for CASE Emergency Blue Light Towers. You can change this slide. There you go. That's our most popular option right now is the CASE Emergency Blue Light Towers. Now, this is what we call twenty-first century technology in the sense that these are not the old towers that you may have seen before. These were specifically designed for higher education, but as we evolved, we started to realize that there was a need for municipalities to have these as well, whether it's in public parks, whether it's along the beach and so forth. Uh, Marissa, you can change that next slide. Okay. The difference with our towers is this, we're cutting the cord. We are a hundred percent wireless. We live in beautiful Florida, so we're gonna rely on the sun and use solar power. You can change the slide. Um, these towers are resilient in a number of different ways. They have a number of different options and upgrades that you can purchase with these towers. You can change the slide again. The first one is the mass notification speaker. Now, this is a wireless marine-grade speaker and it can take one heck of a beating. It can withstand wind, rain, rust, corrosion, sun, and of course hurricanes here in Florida. It has a preset decibel level of a hundred and six to a hundred and eight decibels. It's gonna broadcast in four different directions, a thousand feet. You also have the ability to load pre-recorded messages that you could play to the public in the event of an emergency or a crisis or will give you the ability to call in directly, straight from your phone. You can itemize it verbatim to give specific instructions if that's gonna dictate that type of scenario. It's a very flexible system that we offer. You can change the slide. Another upgrade we have is the faceplate camera. Now, this is gonna tell you who is pressing the button, who they are for facial recognition or to record it for record. That is another option we have. That information can then be uploaded into the cloud and sent directly to your desktop or your cellphone or both for your convenience. You may change the slide. Here is a couple of examples of how this can be set up. Now, the one on the right is a simple one-button system that will go direct to police during the event of a crisis or an emergency. The one in the middle is a recent installation we did for Louisiana State University. They wanted theirs colored tiger purple for school colors. Typically, they come blue. We can customize into any color you want. It's also gonna come with customized vertical lettering as well. The one on the left is a two-button system. Sometimes municipalities want the flexibility to say, hey, I want it to go directly to law enforcement or nine-one-one or our internal security team or I want it to go directly to information. Where can I park? When do parking rules take effect? Where's the nearest bank that can ask general questions? We can customize that and set that up for you any way you want. You can change the slide. This is a recent installation we did at Florida International University. As you can see, we have the ability to tie into existing concrete if you wanna do that, to save money on installations. We just have to measure that concrete and pre-drill to make sure that we have at least six inches of a base concrete level before we actually attach that tower to make sure it can accept the wind load. Otherwise, you can change the slide. We can install into a regular concrete poured form like you see on the top left. Typical's industry standard, eighteen inches in diameter, thirty-six inches deep. We pour the concrete in one day, come back in twenty-four to thirty-six hours once it's cured, put the tower up, attach it, flip a switch and you're hot and ready to go. You may change the slide. We also offer an aerial digital wireless TPZ camera, if you want that. These cameras have a viewing angle of three hundred and fifty-five degrees, left and right, a hundred and forty degrees vertical. They can also record in ten, twenty, or thirty-second clips. It's also gonna give you smart detection software. You can tell it how you want it to record. I want it to record people and vehicles only. It's not gonna pick up trees blowing in the wind with branches. It's not gonna pick up dogs or squirrels in the grass. You can also do a live looking anytime you want. So if you're on vacation in Europe or Maui and you have cell service, not only can you control the camera, you can record exactly what you want anytime you want. You can change the slide. We also offer something called CASE Alert and this is also a game changer. The old towers back in the day, you would have to send someone out there to physically push the button like the Verizon commercial. Can you hear me? Is it working? This does not happen. This is a self-monitoring software. It will send you an email daily on the operational status of the tower to let you know when it's working, if there are any problems. If there's a problem like this one here, we disabled one, this is what it would look like. And again, it'll be mailed to you every single day. So when someone calls us from a company and says, hey, this tower's not working, I get the privilege of telling them, we know, we're already on our way to see you, we'll be there at ten AM. Oh, okay, great. That makes it easy. You can change slide. We do also offer something called the e-phone. Same concept, same technology, smaller package. You can change slide. These can get attached to existing poles in public or we can even install them in indoor areas like parking garages. And again, two powers, two modes for power on these e-phones. We can tie into existing electrical or we do have the ability to run conduit outside to tap into our solar panel and again, completely wireless. Change slide. We also have the ability to put customized logos on there if you wish, to have the people of Sunny Isles Beach know that this is for them. We had a project in New Haven, Connecticut at Yale University. They had seven hundred e-phones. The biggest question was, how do we get the message across to our students and staff that this is for them? We'll put your logo on all seven hundred if you want, and that's what we did. You can change slide. We do also offer Lexan call boxes. You can change slide. These are an older technology, but we do still offer them. Again, both indoor and outdoor, both tying into existing electrical and wireless. Change slide. We do also offer retrofit kits. If there's any other existing older blue light towers that are out there, we will essentially take the guts, rip them out, replace them, make them solar-powered, cap the power lines and we're good to go. Uh, we do offer a one-year, uh, parts and labor that's covered by our maintenance contract and as I mentioned, we'll be on-site in less than twenty-four hours for any maintenance needs that you might have. What we've learned is that when it comes to schools, universities, municipalities, people wanna see what is out there to make sure that they are safe. These have, these are incredibly durable. Once they are anchored down into the concrete, if you back into this with your car, I promise you, your car is gonna lose. This thing's not going anywhere. It's a five-eighths inch steel-encased system. They are beautiful, they are brilliant, they are bold, they are very noticeable and they are extremely reliable. Any questions on the CASE Emergency Blue Light Towers?
So we have blue lights in our parking garages, correct? We have one in Heritage and, um, we have one in Gateway, correct? We have in our parking facilities. What, the question that I have is, because it took me years to even know what a blue light was. And so beyond the issue of awareness and, and understanding of what a blue light is, how, how often has a blue light actually been used?
It's a great question.
I, how many, how many do we have in our city? We, I know we have two, 'cause I've seen them in two garages.
We have them in, in three parking garages, um, Heritage, Government Center and Gateway. I don't have the amount that we have. Maybe Susan can tell you the amount, the, the number of-
Times anybody's ever used them?
But I, I could tell you, um, in the last year, we, we searched our dispatch records and we only had four calls for service with these, that they were used and they're all were at Heritage. And two of them were for parking assistance, their credit card got stuck in the machine. One was for how to use the machine. One was, um, an argument heard, but it was unfounded. When we got there, no one was there. And the other one, um, just pressed a button and nothing else.
So let me ask you, G. In your experience, are these useful? Are they cost-effective for our needs? Yes or no?
I think you guys should do a little more research on that and then come to a decision. As a whole, um, we, we polled neighboring agencies. Um, Out Harbor no longer uses it. Um, they had a lot of prank calls on the beach.
Right.
Um, Aventura, I believe, um, it's, it's, um, same, same thing. They're not much use at the mall. But Miami Beach had good success from it in their parking garages. So, um, and FYU, uh, recently installed them. Um, they said their biggest thing is nobody knows what they are, how to use them, so not many people have used them, so.
So can you just, I mean, again, it took ye- you know, years for me to even know what a blue light was. Can you explain what is a blue light? Do, are there, there, how many people in this audience are under twenty, twenty-five or under? Do you know what a blue light is?
No, no.
No, okay.
I just looked at the one in the government center and I guess they put a U in casing. It doesn't work. I don't know. Someone disconnected it or I just-
Who pays, who pays for the blue light here?
We do.
I mean, we paid for it when we installed them.
We, we paid like once-
It was designed to go directly to PD, so there's no ongoing fee. There's a whole line.
And in this system, this is a private, that it's like an ADP or some sort of a security system?
You can, you can program and set it up any way you want.
ADT, sorry, ADT.
If you want it to go direct to police dispatcher, direct to police, we can do that. If you want it to go to nine-one-one, we can do that. If you don't want that, I want it to go to a separate response team that handles just those calls, we can do that too. We can customize it and set it up any way you want. You just tell us how you want it set up.
And you'd need easements or, so, I, I guess, I guess for me, it's, it's a two-fold issue. Like, does anybody even know what a blue light is? And, and also how, what kind of utility could we really expect from a system like this? You know? So that's just my, those are just, you know, questions that I-
So let's run through a scenario.
Sure.
So someone's walking, there's, there happens to be one of these units in a, in a parking garage. So you're walking back to your car, what, you get attacked maybe, right? And then you have to look for a blue light to say-
It'll have a blue strobe on top that goes, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, but then someone has a cellphone, right? They've been attacked, they didn't get killed.
Right.
They're not incapacitated.
Right.
They can use their cellphone.
If you take into account human behavior, most humans under duress are not gonna be able to unlock their phone, put in their passcode and calmly type away what needs to get done. Studies have shown that people under extreme duress will dial nine-one-one, they won't press send, they panic. This is immediate communication. I see it, I recognize it, I know exactly what it's for. It's one push of a button, boom. I'm directly connected to police or a response team. They know exactly who I am, they know where I am. What's your problem? What do you need? I was just attacked. Okay, we know where you are, we're on our way. Every tower will come with a, a location identifier, both on the nameplate and when the caller comes up on the ID.
So this is like for, uh, like a university campus, like a rape or, you know, or something, like a, like a physical violence kind of thing? I just, I, I guess for me, I'm like, what, what, where's the, you know, is there a utility of, of a system like this in our city?
The way I see it, uh, and that's why I invited John here, is that I do actually see a few places where we, it will be like really useful. Like, for example, the pedestrian bridge in the Winston Towers. It's open at night. It's kind of dark and scary. The same thing with the new Bela Vista Park. It's under the, the, the bridge, again, dark and scary. Also, um, I like the idea of the phone in the lifeguard towers because like our lifeguards were saying, um, don't use the beach after we are gone. But the reality is that the beach is full after they're gone. So after five-thirty, it's a lot of people in the beach. When you are in the beach, you don't have the, your phone maybe next to you. If something happens, um, then what will be the response? How long will it be? So the same thing, um, I personally had no idea what was a blue light. And in the past few weeks, doing the college tour with my daughter, I learned how every college that I, that we visit, uh, they have the blue lights and they have it like, of course, it's a college campus. It's almost in every other street you can find it. And they do use it a lot, not only for emergency, but also for information. They were saying that like, if you are here, you wanna find your child, like you press, you connect, et cetera. So, um, I know and we are very lucky that our police department is so amazing that our crime rate is not the same like Miami Beach. Uh, regardless of that, anything we can do, I, I asked for pricing and he gave me a, a few like preliminary numbers and for the investment that we can do and the benefit that we can get, I do believe is, it matters, uh, to, to, for the people to feel safe. The same thing with the causeway. We wanna do, I, I mean, I would love to be able to see open again our basketball court. One of the issues with the basketball court is that we don't have a police presence in there. Um, maybe we have a blue light, we have a camera. The same thing with the pier. With our pier, if, if the people behave, could be open twenty-four hours. So some people wants to walk at night. We should not be closing our pier. And maybe we have a good system to have it, to have it open. I just believe it gives more freedom to the people when they are being, when, when we know that we have the ability to watch what's going on.
I, there's also an aesthetic component. I mean, putting these towers in all these locations, I mean, it's, I don't know. It's a little, it's, it's a little, for me, it's over the top and I don't, I, I just don't, I'm not feeling the great utility and I'm not, I'm not seeing the real benefit.
If it saves one person of something bad happening, I do believe it is, is worth it.
We're not, you know, we're not, we haven't opened yet, you know, the two parks that you've mentioned. You know, Bela Vista's not open, uh, under, you know, the under basket, I don't know. For me, I think it's a bit premature. I mean, I don't, I, there's no harm in getting a quote, but-
Bela Vista is not open yet, but the kids that they go to school, they use that up and down every single day. Not only the ones that get-
That's a trespass. If it's not, if it's not safe, if it's a trespass.
No, no, not the Bela Vista Park. I guess I'm going under the one sixty-third bridge and-
I'm gonna put like, it's like putting a cell tower up. I mean, we're gonna start putting up blue cell towers.
Well, they're not that tall, first of all. They're only about eleven feet tall, but I do understand your point.
Only eleven feet? I mean, that's, that's a bit notorious.
But there is something to consider. That blue strobe on top, you can control that flash pattern. It's usually two on, two off. It's a presence that people will look for so that if they see a blue light tower, they know they can run there for help.
I, you know, for me, I don't, you know, the, 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 it's a cost benefit, you know, I, I just don't, I, I'm not sure. I'm, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not real warm to this. I mean, this concept, but-
Yes.
I'd be happy to hear it from my colleagues.
Yeah, so I, I, I think we should perhaps investigate a little bit more and be open to, to this idea, whether, you know, we implement it in the short term or longer term. But, um, I used to receive calls from some residents that would perhaps exercise very early in the morning and they would get harassed. A car would kind of, you know, start strolling right by them and get close to them and start, you know, saying obscene things to them.
Yep.
And I would, they would call me like two days after. I'm like, you gotta call the police. I'm like, why don't you call the police? What am I gonna do now? Like, did you get the plate? No. So I think that perhaps we should investigate. Fortunately, we, we don't have a lot of crime in this city. You know? Uh, thank you to the PD for that. But, uh, yeah, I think that early, early in the morning, you have people that exercise, people that have to walk. Uh, and late at night, you have, you know, your walkers and then you have people getting out of, um, some of the sports activities that we have. They're walking back. Some of these girls are walking back or, or even boys. And I think we should probably be open to the idea and perhaps look at certain, you know, areas. Can you cut them down?
Well, you have the option. You can go, you can go with the, the CASE Emergency Blue Light Tower or you can go with the e-phone, which is a smaller version.
You know, it's like putting cell towers.
My, 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 my point is we should be, we should be open to it, yeah.
If I can just say, we're working on enhancing our camera system in the city. Our wifi, our camera systems. They have new cameras now that have voice within the cameras. That if we can set up our system for PD surveillance and PD can actually, if we have the right cameras with voice, can actually speak to people on the street. Isn't that true, Eddie?
So I'm, I'm sure there is technology, um, out there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, there is technology. I know for a fact.
But somebody has to be monitored there. Somebody has to be looking and monitoring that.
Well, once we have wifi, the correct wifi in the city-
What if the wifi is not working? What if wifi is not working? They don't use wifi.
Well, it could be solar wifi. It could be solar-
They, they don't use wifi for these ones.
Ours is an AT&amp;T SIM card. It's put right inside the tower or the e-phone. You press the button, boom. Unlimited voice and data that's gonna go out immediately. So it doesn't, doesn't rely on wifi, I'm sorry.
And I like the idea of the noise thingy that if something happened and you press-
Well, we're more likely to have a power outage than loss of wifi.
Well, that's not what happened in the last hurricane. We lost the, I didn't lose any power and I lost the wifi for a week. Anything can happen. Like, we have the different scenarios. I like it. I would like to see a proposal, maybe with the, with our chief or with the PD. They can locate few places, like where, maybe we can do a pilot-
Sure.
-program and put it in a specific areas because what you say about harassing me, it happened to me under the causeway. I was in the bicycle and a guy was there- I was in the bicycle, and a guy was there in a very weird car, taking pictures, picture of us in the bicycle. And it was not even that late at night, it was around like five, six PM, you know?
Yeah, but you're not gonna have one of these towers everywhere.
Of course not.
I mean, it's like pollution.
But the, specific areas, that's, that's the idea.
It's just like what I was saying in the parking lot. If you get attacked in a parking lot, and the blue light is on the first floor and you get attacked on the second floor, you're not gonna, maybe not even know to run to the first floor to this tower.
Typically, best practice, you make a good point, typically best practice for a parking garage, we'd put two per floor, depending on budget.
I, I think we all should, should really, you know, defer to our police department, about the advocacy and all.
Yes, I agree.
Sure.
You know, before we go into a full board proposal. I think we need a little more advice and consent by the police department.
And also, as we develop our wifi and our camera system throughout the city, then we can actually make an intelligent decision.
Okay, I think, do we have direction here, or are we?
We put in contact with the chief and.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can talk.
And let them work and see, yeah.
I was handed your, your, your document during the compost presentation. This makes a lot more sense with, with your presentation, just so you know. I was looking, I was looking for the barrel in here, I was finding.
What is this? I don't see it.
I was like, where's the compost?
I wasn't comparing, but as long as you're comparing.
But thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick update, I was incorrect, we have three, three at Heritage, three at Gateway, three at City Hall, and we do pay monthly for the phone lines, so thank you, Derek.
And we've only had four?
In the last year.
In the last year.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I've never seen them anyway.
I have no, I have no idea.
Are they properly, are they older phones?
Nobody knows what they are, nobody.
I can tell you the ones, they just changed the casing here by History Hall outside, and it's possibly a new casing, I don't know who did it, but.
It wasn't us.
But you walk up to it, yeah, there's a blue light there, but you don't know what it is.
I had no idea.
I mean, is this police on the side? The side you can't see, it should be something visible in the front, but no one knows what it is, I'll be honest with you.
All right, sir.
And your, your system, how susceptible is it to vandalism?
Honestly, I have not heard of people vandalizing them, because that blue light is on there, it's almost like a deterrent.
Well, but if you had, let's say, one under the causeway, or at.
Well, it has a camera.
Bella Vista Park, where, you know, you don't have too many people around.
Right.
And you had a group of vandals.
Yeah, they could absolutely vandalize it, absolutely, I couldn't, I couldn't stand here and honestly tell you, yeah, the, our towers are completely, you know, vandalism proof. Yeah, it could, absolutely could happen. If you go with the option for the camera, though, now you've got eyes on the scene. Everyone's gonna be held accountable now. That camera's gonna pick them up, the minute they start walking, it starts recording.
Right.
Well, I don't know, safety should be our priority. So anything we can do to give more safety to the people is my belief that we should try.
No, I know, but we have a safety concept still in the works, so rather than jumping the gun, I think we have to get our, you know, our ducks in a row before we decide on something. Or go near our city camera system and all.
Yeah, I, I, I push this back to the police department, I think we should have, that, that, this should be handled through our administration.
Because we want to have the best cohesive system for the money.
Sure.
I don't think we're ready yet to make a decision on something like this.
So that's the outdoor solution, can I show you the indoor solution? Something very short.
Is that I fall and I can't get up?
Close, but it's better.
Oh, can we, can we kind of, can we, can we?
Can we give you two more minutes?
He's here.
Yes, two more minutes.
I promise it'll be fast.
Yeah, 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 please, yeah.
This is called Crisis Alert by Synthegix. Synthegix is a company that's focused on one hundred percent about emergency notifications. This is the fastest car on the racetrack I've ever seen. This is a badge-based emergency alert system, okay? This badge, every employee in the city would get. Has a battery life of five to seven years inside. It's the size of an ID badge, okay? And what this is gonna allow you to do is every single employee's name would be associated with that QR code on this badge. You can change a slide. Change a slide again. Okay, so one button, easy, push button, we can't make it any easier than that if you need help. It's gonna give you total coverage based on the building or campus you're on. Number three, it's gonna give you proximity-based location on where you're at, accuracy within ten feet. And number four, we're gonna tie into your lights and sounds, think, think of locks, lights.
How much is each one?
I'm sorry?
How much is each one?
Each one of these, they're free with the package that you purchase. It's based on the number of employees, the square footage you need to cover.
Okay, and what if we want, could, what if we wanted to have?
Jerry, let him finish.
One of these on, one, please. What if we wanted to have one of these on each resident ID card?
Doesn't go on a resident ID card, it's only for employees.
For employees, okay.
Only for employees. You can change a slide. So the beautiful thing here is that we're gonna do this in two different ways. I can even pass this around if you want. This card has a small radio receiver inside, you push it three times, it's gonna vibrate in your hand confirming that the alert went out.
And the alert goes to the PD?
Goes directly to internal response team only for a staff alert. So you push it three times, a staff alert could be a medical emergency, it could be a seizure, it could be a heart attack, suspicious activity, whatnot. If it's a lockdown alert, technically it's eight pushes of the button, but we tell people, just keep pressing it all the time until the building goes into lockdown. When it goes into lockdown, you're gonna see these beacons go off. We put these in every single room, in hallways fifty feet apart, every entryway, every exitway. So if someone comes into the building, they know this is not the right time to come in the building.
This is not the right time, yeah, yeah.
There's no alarm with this, it's a small chirp, and why is that? Because if law enforcement's notified, and they're gonna be on scene and they're trying to communicate via radios, we don't need a blaring siren in their ear, we also don't want to escalate the system. So let's say you have a situation where there's an altercation, or if someone's getting fired, and you need to have HR there, and you're worried that this may escalate, it's a silent alarm. This is not gonna go off during a regular staff alert, this only goes off if the building goes into lockdown. You can change a slide again. So if it goes off, good, press another slide. That's what it would look like for the internal response team. It's gonna give you proximity-based on their technology within ten feet of where that person is. You can change slide again. If it's an active shooter, change slide again. We also have the ability to take over all the computers that are hardwired into your system. So it would take over every computer screen.
Lock the doors, state.
It's like a purge, you know, help me out, well, like, you know, that kind of.
Oh, but it's good for like emergencies.
So, an employee could initiate a staff alert, visual cues would go off if it's a lockdown. We could tie into your PA system with pre-recorded messages. We have the ability to take over your computer screens if need be, and then we can go direct to law enforcement. Now notifying law enforcement during a lockdown can happen a couple of different ways. Number one, we can give law enforcement a tablet that would sit right inside police dispatch free of charge. Number two, we can integrate through their CAD, their computer automated dispatch, where we would just sit in the background, and if an incident came up, it would then take over their screen and let them know where it is. Or three, we can use a third party like Rapid SOS. Essentially, it's gonna put everybody on the same page in three seconds. Law enforcement will know who it is, they'll know what it is, they'll know where it is, in three seconds. And because it's a badge-based system, every employee would get one. It can determine which floor you're on. And what I love about this system is unlike apps, apps, everyone says, oh, it's an app, it's easy, it's great, right? Because it's, just put it on your phone. The problem with apps that we've found is that, number one, if you're living in a concrete bunker and you can't get a cellphone signal out, I don't care how good your app is, it's never gonna work. Not to mention the human response, right? You want someone to unlock their phone to think about it while they're running for their life when gunshots are ringing out. The average civilian's not gonna be able to do that. With this badge, they can do it. Keep hitting it until you see these things go off. Once these things go off, you'll know with confidence, law enforcement's notified, so is the internal response team, and they know where you are. The other beauty of this is that badge that you're passing around, if you have multiple buildings and you're walking from building to building, you don't have to re-register with that badge, the system will automatically pick you up and know where you are at any given time.
Where, where do you have that right now?
What's that, Synthegix?
Yes.
This is now currently installed in twenty-five percent of all school districts in the state of Florida. The most recent installation was Palm Beach County, two-hundred-and-twenty-two schools.
So it's a school thing? Again, you know, I see this as an HR kind of, you know, coming for the commission, you know, it's kind of, it should really be vetted through our.
Again, it was designed for the K through twelve marketplace, but it's now being installed into hospitals, municipalities, manufacturing facilities, distribution centers, bottling plants, Cisco Foods, Coca-Cola, it has multiple applications because it is so flexible. Those badges, by the way, they have been tested, and I'm not gonna be proud of saying this, but they have been dropped in toilets, they've been dropped in swimming pools, they've had coffee spilled on them, they've been left in cars, on the dashboards, in baking hot sun, they still work fine.
How about the effects of the signal to the, to the unit? Is it like a cellphone?
It runs off its own independent network, so it's not gonna run off the wifi or the cellular, it runs off two tons of technologies.
No, I'm talking about the effects on the body.
Not that we've heard of anything, no.
Thank you, John, thank you, John.
Thanks, guys, appreciate your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, next up is the discussion regarding hurricane safety.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm on safety.
Commissioner LaMla.
Yeah, so, so during, during the last hurricane, unfortunately, the hurricane devastated the West Coast, Fort Myers, but, you know, there's, there's a recurring issue here that I think it needs to be addressed, and we need to work with the residents and the buildings here that, you know, people leave items out, you know? The buildings, especially the big, big buildings like the Winston Towers and other buildings, they tell the residents to put away everything in their balconies. And I would say only forty percent, maybe fifty percent of the people comply. And you're looking at items like chairs, tables, pottery, other items that are, become projectiles and could kill someone. And I just wanted to open up to discussion to see if we could find a way for greater compliance. See how this city could work with some of these buildings, and, and I don't know, I don't know how this is gonna work. I mean, we have a lot of elderly people that are obviously not gonna be able to put away some of the stuff that is in the balcony. Some of the stuff is very heavy or very bulky. And then there's the logistics too, that, you know, when, when, when I was part of the board in, 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 in my building, there's no way that the personnel there could help every single unit owner, you know, that, that was elderly or in need of some help, put away and store these, these items inside the apartment. So I don't know what the solution is, but I think that it warrants a discussion and some brainstorming to see how we could work together and make this, you know, safer when we have storms or hurricanes.
Well, I'll give you another example. I have a house, a rental house across the street from me that has a leak in the roof. The, the owner has, you know, it's been leaking on the, in the tenant's kitchen the entire summer. He had a tarp with bricks holding the tarp down. I, I called the owner and I said, it's hurricane season, you can't have those bricks on the roof. Right before we had Ian, we didn't know where it was going. I told him, you, you know, when I saw the storm coming, I said, you need to get this roof repaired and get those bricks off the roof, it's gonna go through someone's window, a brick. He did a repair, but it wasn't the correct repair, and now he has the tarp back on the roof with the same bricks. Yeah, with the same bricks. And I called him up again, and I told him, you need to, you know, within the next week, you need to get these bricks off the roof and do a correct repair, or, you know, there's gonna be an issue.
I mean, things fly around, I've seen them flying around, thank God that it hasn't hit anybody and hasn't killed anybody, or flown into like somebody else's, through somebody else's window, but, I mean,
So.
It's, it's a matter of time, I think, I mean, yeah.
So I agree, you know, a big, a big component to what, what constitutes hurricane-related damage is really the debris, right? It's the fallout from the debris. And while it's true that it, there should be a protocol, I guess my question to legal is, so we, as a city, can we regal, can we mandate that if, you know, before, if there's a hurricane, your, the, the city code or the building code or something mandates that you remove? Or is that purely a private kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a private matter because it's on private property?
No, I, I think you can do that, the problem is going to be enforcement.
Yeah.
In emergency times, how are you gonna get people out?
With fifty thousand, with fifty thousand units in the city, how are, who's going to get all fifty thousand of them in compliance?
Right, oh, so, and also because of the, you know, the timeframe, right?
I think Susan, the city, the city works with those, with all of those hotels and all of the condos, you know, and asks them, you know, to tell their residents to get that stuff in, right? They're already doing that.
Yes, we, our media team does a really good job of pushing out notifications, it's time to do this, do this now, and things like that. When it comes to construction projects, uh, there's Clay Parker.
Clay, step up to the mic.
Good evening. Hi, Clay.
When, when, when they post a, a warning, our building department goes out and they post every construction job and give them an instruction on what needs to be removed. But our code enforcement, they go out and, and go to every condominium and do the same posting as a courtesy, and let them know that this, that items from the balcony need to be removed, and, and potted plants need to either be removed or tied down properly lashed. And I can share with you the, the warnings that we do post out.
But it's up to the building manager to basically go door to door.
It's a responsibility of every property owner.
It's just too overwhelming for us, our staff to come out during a hurricane and basically going floor to floor or unit to unit.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying our staff, I mean, logistically, I would say it's impossible. I mean, when I was in the board of the Winston Towers three hundred, we would send our staff to help the elderly and some people, but there's no time, I mean, forget it, we need to, you know, the staff had to secure things with the building, I, I don't know.
It comes down to the residents, Alex.
It does come down to the residents, but I don't know how we could brainstorm and perhaps try to improve compliance. We need to find a way.
Well, I think that's something after the fact. I know if I get something coming through my window after the storm, and it has my neighbor's name on it or something that had been on their porch, that's gonna be on their liability.
No, no, I understand, but I mean, we want to prevent a death from these projectiles flying around, and.
If they didn't comply, and I can identify their goods, that's going to be on their liability.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, I, I, I just want people to, I don't know if it's education, if it's being more stringent to, on these buildings, the buildings being more stringent on the, on the residents, where if it hits their pockets, I mean, obviously you don't wanna go the way of, you know, that, but I mean, there's gotta be a way. I mean, it was so dangerous, I mean, I would see all these items on the balcony, I was just praying that, you know, the hurricane didn't hit us and things would start flying around, and then we're gonna be lamenting ourselves that, you know, we could have done something else, we could have done more, blah, blah, blah.
And if you have snowbirds also who may not be here, who, you know, who removes that furniture?
But maybe, maybe it's time to think about it.
Yeah, I agree.
And start looking at perhaps some sort of, you know, action plan and talk to some of these buildings and see what can be done.
I think that something like when you're talking, like what, what, there's like, in some places, they have like floor captains or at least for a couple, you know, maybe not necessarily board members, but like a couple of people who, who are, you know, you find those other doers, you know, who can help for the, with that compliance. And it's not city-based or anything, it's just being a good neighbor and being a, you know, considerate of, of.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to open it up to discussion, I think you have a good point there, and, but yeah, maybe it's something that we need to keep discussing and perhaps brainstorm and come up with some.
So if I have coconut trees, and I don't clean my coconuts before I know a storm is coming, and ends up going through someone's window, I'm sure I can be liable.
Well, I, I, I think, Jerry, that it, what I'm talking about is, you know, when the building. No, I think it's a little bit different, I'm talking about items like furniture.
Yeah.
Like pottery that could be projectiles. I mean, coconuts, you know?
Well, still, I'm just saying, if someone's property destroys someone else's property, right? Due to their negligence, it's negligence.
It is negligence, yeah, but some people are just outright negligent, I mean, I, I, I mean, they need to.
Well, then, that's where liability insurance comes in.
Yeah, no, but I want to prevent the death.
Condos have rules, though, Jerry, that's the difference. Condos have rules and they require that you bring in your items from your balconies, and, and a lot of people don't.
Yeah.
And, but we don't wanna be tracking down whose chair went through, we want, we want the chair to not be in the air, right?
We don't have enough people to go monitor who's not bringing.
It has to be a board, city, uh, solution.
I just want us to brainstorm, I think we need, this is a very, you know, important safety issue, and perhaps we should bring in some of these condo boards and see how we could brainstorm and come up with solutions. Maybe they need to start, you know, be more stringent with some of these. Maybe they need to start, you know, be more stringent with some of these residents and maybe we could help out with education and, I don't know.
Yeah, but you're also asking for more common sense, which is very lacking these days.
I mean, we did have an excellent, I was there a few years ago when we did our hurricane presentation.
And it was packed with, you know, the property managers and, and, you know, and I think it should be mandatory every year to destroy it. We used to do that and it, I believe it was helpful. And I think the message you have to get across, it's a pet passion of mine. I've, I've done a lot of damage assessment. I've, I've, I was twenty-four hours a day for three months at Hurricane Andrew, working for Dade County. They, my city loan, let me go down there and work down there to run the damage assessment teams during Andrew. I've been there for Katrina and what we witnessed was, it's, it's, it's really scary. The thing that you have to get across to people, when they tell you to evacuate, you have to pay attention to that. And I remember when, when Wilma hit and some of the sliding glass doors in the Arlen House 100 blew out, what people don't realize, you have one failure of one window or one sliding glass door.
The whole thing goes.
It's a ballooning effect.
Yeah.
And all your interior walls are designed for fire load, they have no design for wind load. So those interior walls that are just pinned to the floor, they start coming in like a house of cards. And so it's important that we prepare everybody for that. So I'd be glad to be part of anything you, you want to find for a solution.
I think we should have that, that course that you gave a few years ago before COVID, I think it should be a mandatory, you know, for all the property managers and the boards to come.
I think we should have a mandatory common sense seminar.
Well, I think part of it is that a lot of our residents are not Floridians, you know?
They're not Floridians, but perhaps they're not here.
And they don't understand with the hurricane experience, like I grew up, you know, when there's a heavy storm, you have the plywood, you tie everything down, it's just part of how we grow up. But if you're not from here, then you can't appreciate, you can't maybe visualize that your furniture will fly off your balcony. So maybe it's, it's education on top of it.
And hit a car or someone that's around.
Who knows?
Because it doesn't take a hurricane, it could be just a tropical storm.
Correct.
And there's still people around.
I know, I learned how to tie stuff down and, and, you know, like you just do that. Okay, I think we're.
All right, thank you, Clay.
Thank you, Clay.
We have to reply to that, that was great.
Clay, I have, I have one item to speak to you about, just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Long coconuts.
With your name on it.
With your name. Don't, the lesson is, don't put your initials on those coconuts.
Okay, item 12D.
That's Susan.
Been deferred and item 12F, discussion regarding pedestrian safety. I'll be quick and I'll be brief, okay? Just a few updates on some of our pedestrian safety initiatives. We have new flashing light speed, speed limit signs, locations approved, order arrived, installation by early November. So we have new speed light signs coming our way in November. Flashing stop signs on interior roads, two have been installed last week, others scheduled by the end of the month. Flashing pedestrian crossing signs for interior streets, product on order, shipment expected by the end of the month. Very good. Flashing pedestrian crossing signs for state roads have been denied by FDOT. We had a meeting this week. Crosswalk painting permit is prepped, met with FDOT on the color, they were reviewing the request for the color of crosswalk painting. Elevated and artistically painted crosswalk at 174th Street in A1A with a proposed scramble traffic signalization has been conceptually designed and under consideration by FDOT. That's our B 174th Street intersection. They are studying that further. That is a top, top priority for us and for the city. FDOT is conducting a study on crosswalk enhancements in several intersections with 174th, 178th, and 183rd being listed as high priority.
Right.
Bicycle lane on Collins Avenue has been studied, design plan being submitted to FDOT for consideration. Plan for replacement of old gold traffic signs to the fluorescent yellow is complete. FDOT permit is required and is being considered. So that's that for some of the pedestrian enhancers.
Now, one question, 163rd, they, they approved for the flashing lights at the Resnick Crossing? Or no?
So interestingly, if I may.
That is interesting because we, we were denied the flashing lights.
They will not do it at an intersection, at a signalized intersection. But according to John Bolton, who is the contractor for the project that's happening on Sunny Hills Boulevard, he is putting the flashing crosswalk like this signage, not necessarily in the roadway. But they did agree to put the border around the traffic signal lights because as you're driving, they get lost in the background. So this would make them more.
It's a backboard, it's a backboard enhancement.
And still, they're not agreeing to rumble strips.
They are still not agreeing to rumble strips.
We will be, we will be moving forward with that initiative.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, we're still pushing that.
We will be, we will be moving forward with that.
At least seventy-five feet before the light.
Right. But, but we absolutely, you know, we were turned down to get the flashing lights on the state road, on the intersections. That's the, the big takeaway from the meeting that we had with, with Stan and Susan and FDOT. But on the, on the streets where it's just a crosswalk, like we've implemented that on, we have two locations, correct?
One seven-two in North Bay Road.
And North Bay Road and, and so.
And a little further down on North Bay Road.
When these people are coming down, Alex, when these people are coming down the bridge on the downhill and they're on their cell phones, the only thing that's going to wake them up is a rumble strip.
Yeah, understood.
And, and FDOT just is not getting that message.
I'll chime in on this because I'll, I'll, here's, here's, here's the other, the other side of that conversation. I, I initially thought that the, I initially thought that the rumble strips were a good idea and when we had that first safety meeting shortly after that accident, I spoke to FDOT about that and I thought, you know, why can't you put these, you know, like those, I call them like the little speed bumps, right? And, and what, his initial response to me was, he's like, "Well, eventually people get used to them and they just drive over," you know, "It doesn't really slow them down. If it's part of your daily commute, it, people just like plow over them."
But this is the people that are on their cell phones.
"Hold on, hold on, please." And then the other concept, the thing that I had not considered is the noise. And while the new buildings may have the storm windows and maybe it's not an issue for them, I can tell you the older buildings like Plaza of the Americas, which, which we face, you know, 163rd Street, we hear everything. We have the older glass. And so we're gonna be, I'm still, hold on, we're gonna be, I'm still, hold on, we're gonna be subjected to that noise at all times of, of, of traffic.
You only feel it in the car, it's not noise. It's like, you know, when you change lanes on the, on the.
You hear it, you hear it outside.
On the lane change where they have just the, you know, the, it's a little raised, elevated ceramic, whatever it is, okay? And you feel it in the car, but you don't hear it. That's what we need.
If it's, if it, if there's no noise, then I have no objection. I, I find that I, I would have to literally see it to believe it because my experience is that there's, that it's noisy.
Why?
Yeah, I'm asking Susan, what was the, the reason why they denied, they said?
They did deny it for the reasons Vice Mayor just said.
Because of the noise?
The noise and the fact that they find them to be ineffective after a period of time.
I requested those for years, yeah, for years. I've been fighting for it.
It's the same person every time.
They continue, I, I don't think they want to just do the expense or the work, you know, because there is.
I don't think it's expensive.
No, no, actually, it's only paint, it's paint over paint. It's really cheap.
I don't think it's an expensive.
The one comment he, they made to us was that at our request, they were putting in the light concrete on the bridge to minimize the sound of the cars going over the bridge. And so because they were doing that, it would be, you know, counterproductive to that goal to then add these strips that would then make a noise.
Those are the strips that they have in the Aventura, in front of Aventura Mall, going south, southbound, when you come from 2,000, 2, 203rd Street.
From Ives Dairy.
Ives Dairy Road, correct.
When you go south.
Yeah, that's exactly the same. And I do believe they're very effective. I don't think they're noisy and like what we were, Jerry was saying, the buildings, we only need it going down when you're coming inside Sunny Hills, like going east side, east bound. The buildings on the right are new buildings, so they have those window impact, impact windows. On the left, we have a commercial building and then we have Gateway. And then Plaza of the Americas all the way on the east side, on the left side, so on the north side. So the noise, I don't believe, I, I don't believe it will cause the impact. So I don't agree why they just continue saying no. It's a very fast, effective way of making sure that the people go slow down because even because of the gravity, it just, I take that road, I leave south from 163rd. So every single day I go through that road many, many times. By default, and I'm paying a lot of attention, by default, when you start going down, you just like go to forty miles like this and more. And I'm paying attention, so I press the brakes and I make sure, sometimes even I see people going so fast next to me that I just start horn, the horn, so they get aware or wake up what they're doing. So again, I think we should push more for that.
Not only that, but you have people now watching movies in their cars as they're driving.
It's fast and effective and it's cheap. I think it's a win-win situation.
So we do have a follow-up with FDOT based on our meeting on Tuesday, so we will, we will add that again back into the conversation.
Who's going to be, Dana, are you going to be in the meeting? If, if you are not, I would love to, to participate, okay? Thank you.
It's not scheduled. We just met with them on Tuesday and we've been exchanging emails yesterday and today.
But we absolutely, I think the most important, the most important component of that was really what, you know, 174th Street. We have the, we have one to have that four-way scramble crosswalk and how we're going to deal with that.
Yeah, I hope that works.
That's really our main goal, was to get that, that, that intersection, that four-way.
And that's been approved.
Well, we haven't, we, they won't study it, but that's, that's something that we want to really aggressively move forward with on 174th Street.
Can you repeat, Susan, again, the enhancements that FDOT is going to do for the crosswalk in front of Gateway?
They're adding the flashing like pedestrian crossing ahead, the flashing lights.
Not on the floor?
No. Not on the floor.
Why?
Not on ground, yeah.
It's not an intersection, I don't, what's the.
So they're going to do it on the sides?
They're going to do it on the sides and they're going to put.
And then they're going to put a backboard on the, on the light, on the traffic signal.
Yes.
I feel that they just don't want to pay for it. I'm sorry.
We did offer to pay for enhancements. We, we put that on the table.
And then they say yes?
They said that they would have to approve those enhancements.
Okay.
It would have to be, it would have to meet their approval.
So the flashing lights on the sides and then, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a long crosswalk.
What they.
Anyone on their cell phone or watching the movie?
Yeah, they're gonna.
They're not, it's not, they're not attracted to that.
What they said was the.
They need to be woken up.
What they said was the flashers on the pavement with a traffic signal. He said that the, the, the flashers in the pavement with a traffic signal sends a mixed message, you know, it's confusing because those are typically where you don't have a traffic signal. So they won't put the two together.
Okay, listen, I know that they, this is what they do for a living. We could give it a try, but I think that we need to let them know, okay, we'll go with your advice, but you need to bring us, if this is not working, what would be the next solution or next enhancement, so.
But we don't want to have an incident.
No, we don't want to have an incident. Let's see how it works, but then we need to be quick and say, "Listen, this needs to be further enhanced." Yeah, anyhow, all right.
So, yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to follow up on that because we're discussing a lot of things and initiatives that are subject to FDOT approval. What we control ourselves and one of the things I wanted to update you on is our police department and where we are on that. And for me, that is the most significant thing that we can enhance in terms of pedestrian safety and for the health, safety and welfare of our citizens. So I just wanted to give you an update on the investment in the police department and where we are as of today. If you recall, we were short-staffed and we were lacking in people and resources. And ten months ago now, through your leadership and direction, you instructed me to establish, launch and fund our police department. That was in a time, if you recall, of crisis where other cities were cutting back their police department. You directed me to build and expand and secure our police department and this is what we did in very short time. As of now, within the past ten months, we selected and promoted Chief Santiago. We presented the challenges of the hiring issues we were having to our human resources manager who came up with the idea of sign-on bonuses. And from that point, we went through the selection and testing process for sergeant promotions. We've also promoted two lieutenant positions. We created a separate community resource unit that has two dedicated officers. We now patrol the beach seven days a week, which was something that you mentioned to us. We've purchased the latest equipment and technology for our officers, including electronic ticketing. We've upgraded our police cars to include hybrid vehicles and you've also authorized the purchase of a marine patrol boat, which is on order. The most significant thing that we've done to date in very short time period is by the end of this month, we will have hired eleven new police officers. And I spoke with the chief earlier today, we are now seeing a trend from our proactive pedestrian and safety traffic enforcement. We're now seeing a trend where we're actually, actually issuing less citations than we have in the past. So people are understanding now that if you come into our city, that you're going to meet our police department first. And I think of all of the accomplishments over these past ten months, this is the most significant one and it's related and I wanted to specifically, and this message has been relayed to me from the men and women of the police department, I wanted to thank Vice Mayor Goldman, Vice Mayor Viscara, Commissioner Joseph, Commissioner Lama, Commissioner Suvasant for enhancing the pedestrian, the health, the safety, welfare of our residents and city of Sunny Hills Beach. So for me, I want to end our discussion on the pedestrian safety with the most positive thing because those are things that we can control. You gave us the green light on that, though we're working towards these other initiatives that are subject to approvals. You've given me the ability to move forward on this and the impact has been significant. The feedback that we've gotten from the residents has been nothing but positive. So I just wanted to update you and thank you.
I just have one question and also for Chief Santiago. Is there anywhere on 163rd Street that we can set up radar to catch people coming down the bridge?
We do.
From the bridge?
They do, by gateway.
Yes. Yeah, so we've been having a lot of success there?
Yeah, actually, there was a post on Facebook today showcasing our officers.
Right.
Yeah, we're going to tell, tell the chief to come speak into the mic so we can update, but don't reveal all of our areas where we do enforcement.
If we have that be visible on a regular basis, I think that would really go a long way.
We are there on a regular basis, we've been there on a regular basis and it will continue.
Perfect.
And you do, you do see the difference, I mean, there's always people who are going to not follow the rules and, you know, but I, I do see now that the difference is when you're coming, when you're going east on 163rd Street Bridge, when you're, you know, when I get my, my coffee from Dunkin', I come back and you see people, you see the red lights, you see people pumping on the brakes after coming down, down the bridge. And that's that changed behavior that, that comes from that consistent. And that's that changed behavior that, that comes from that consistent, uh, presence. Uh, and yes, there's, you know, obviously some people haven't learned their lesson yet and those are the people who are gonna keep getting ticketed. And eventually they'll learn or they'll go broke.
Yes, I mean, we, we, I wish we can be at every spot at every time, but I can tell you, officers are telling me that it's getting harder to actually find a legit violation.
Excellent.
So, and I'm proud to say that and we wanna continue that.
Perfect.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, um, next discussion item is twelve F. And that is the use designation for the former Turnberry Sales Center.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, I believe I, I have consensus from you all regarding the Turnberry Sales Center. We have worked to reason the property to its proper use and we've also done some interior work and exterior work. We've needed to do some roofing and we've done some upgrades to the site and we're now ready to start programming. So with your consensus, our intent is to use the facility for some teen center-related programming.
Now, how about, do we have any plans for morning classes? Because I've been, I've spoken with our residents at Marion Towers who would rather walk safely to one hundred and eighty-fifth Street than go to Gateway for classes. They feel safer going in that direction.
I, if I may, um, we have been working with Marion Towers to have transportation to get them to Gateway Center and our enrollment is going pretty well there. I think it would be, um, I don't wanna say wasteful, but to duplicate what we're doing in two locations, I don't know that we have, you know, the demand for two locations.
Well, I know, absolutely, we would have Golden Shores people plus people from across in the high-rises coming to, uh, the Golden Shores area for classes.
We, we can do a survey and see if they would be willing to pay for programming at that other location. Okay.
I think the primary objective is to, is to purpose that as a teen and a youth center. I think we have to focus on that, that component first.
Well, we don't know the demand that we have, that we have for other classes. It's a very large space and if we're going to start utilizing it, I'd like to see it utilized to the fullest.
Right, I mean, that would, that, you know, we have to be mindful of budgeting and again, you know, we're putting a lot of effort into Gateway, you know.
These classes do, you know, they're, they're run at a fee.
Gail, I don't know if you wanna a- address that. For me, I mean, we've, we've put a lot of emphasis and a lot of energy and resources into the Gateway programming, so to kind of cut that into two quadrants of the city, I don't know.
Thank you so much, yes. We, um, our senior program is really taking off at Gateway and we have done some outreach to seniors to get them into that location. Um, we also had a teen talk meeting with teens and had about twenty teens attend. Um, we had, it was the first one, it was, uh, it'll be held the second Tuesday of every month. Um, and those teens are super excited about having a space. They gave us a ton of great ideas that we would love to, um, eventually put together and, and present to you guys, but they are really excited about maybe getting off of the streets and playgrounds and graffiti and having a place to, um, come and hang out.
Right, but that would be for after school.
It would be for after school, but essentially this, this spot that we're looking to create for them is basically a home for them so that they have a place that they feel safe and comfortable, um, kind of like we did for the teens.
But then the building would be sitting idle until two or three in the afternoon.
It, it would essentially sit idle and we wouldn't staff it and we wouldn't make sure that, um, there was anything in there, but it would give the teens a place to call their, their spot.
Well.
Essentially, that's what they wanna call it, is their spot.
So the idea would be probably to staff it from like two PM or one PM to eight PM, perhaps, nine PM?
Yes, exactly.
I mean, I could see something like a mommy and me at, you know, in that space if we wanted to do that, but not.
It wouldn't be seniors, though. It would be something that would be dual-purpose with what, you know, these teenagers are looking for.
If, if the idea, I'm sorry, if the idea is, uh, to help the teens that they know that they need a space, they also need activities outdoors.
Correct.
And my issue with using that space is that it's gonna take time and money. We have already a basketball court ready under the costway that should be open for them today.
No, I believe that should be opened as well.
Well, that's my point. And then instead of using the resources and the time and the money into that place that they're gonna go from the inside classroom to inside the teen center, which maybe is beautiful and, and is gonna be amazing, but having three teens at home and they hang out a lot around my, my place.
But not everyone plays basketball.
They, they wanna be, no, they wanna be outside. They wanna be outdoors. They, they, they have so much energy and that's why they're hanging out in, in publics, when, et cetera. So, um, I think that we have again, uh, basketball court, the day that we hold that event over there, people were super happy, super excited. I received them a lot of phone calls, how upset the people was the next day or the few days later when they went to the basketball court, it was lucky game. So it was like a tease, you know?
Absolutely, that should not be wrong.
So we, we, we shouldn't be doing that. Like if we have a place, um, like a chief says on point that we need more ice in the ground in there, so okay, so let's bring something there so we can monitor that specific area that we have it ready already. And we can bring maybe ping-pong tables. It's tough for the children to be, to the teens to be outside. We can make a movie out, down there. There is so much potential in that area and I don't think it will take the time or the money to repurpose that, that center. I know we have and we wanna do something with it, but, uh, it's, it's my opinion and with the teenagers, I have a lot of teenagers around me, they wanna be outdoors. They don't want to be indoors. That's what they're looking forward, so.
Not every, not
Well, how many, how many, how many teenagers are we talking about in the city? I mean, how big is the, the demographic, say, from ten to, ten to twenty? I mean, we've gotta have hundreds of kids.
There are hundreds of kids.
Yeah, it is.
They held a pop-up teen event and it was overwhelmingly successful and
We had about three hundred kids that showed up in the gym after school.
I mean, there's
And no, they had no information whatsoever.
So it's not, it's, for me, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm proud to say that I'm serving as a catalyst for the underpark and that whole concept of, you know, repurposing, you know, the, the, under the bridge. But by the same token, I feel that it's not, one is, one idea is not incompatible or exclu- exclusive to the other, right? I think we can have indoor and outdoor and do it in a, you know.
And if I may
Sorry, go ahead.
And let's not forget that we have, we have that intercoastal, the intercoastal park is coming.
Only wanna have our kids maybe play chess and intellectual games rather than just video games.
So the narrow, the narrow issue that we're discussing here is, are we going to use the Turnberry Sales Center because we've invested the money to, the roof should be fixed, right, by now or it's getting?
The roof is fixed, but we have a new leak and that, that's in the process of being fixed. The Turnberry Sales Center, I don't disagree with using the Lehman, but we're not there yet. We have parking agreements, we have things that we have to unravel to be able to use that space, so it's not immediate. The Turnberry is far more immediate and it gives us the opportunity to have both indoor and outdoor space.
That's the, this is the narrow, right?
We plan to bring the basketball courts to the Turnberry site, section it off in a way that we can limit it to residents only. And that is something that the police department found to be acceptable.
And so, yeah, we're here to discuss Turnberry. We're not here to discuss all the different sites and all the different, 'cause there's a much larger timeline for, under the Lehman Bridge
Correct.
Than necessarily, I mean, we're talking about, this sales center will be open, what, in a month from, we can open this in a month from now?
Yeah, because the goal is to get the teens in there and let them design what it's gonna be. Let them choose some decorations. And I wanna remind you that we did get over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Turnberry to make some improvements on that.
So I think that's the, that's what we need consensus here about, are we going to open this up and is it gonna serve as a teen and a youth center? I think that's really, that's basically the issue.
But I think it can be more than that as well.
But let's, let's start with the baseline of that. Let's, can we get some consensus here that we're gonna, we're gonna be able to utilize that space for the teen purpose?
But it's too large just to designate it for the teens. I believe it should be a city center for, and, and to take a survey from people in the high-rises as well as Golden Shores or throughout the city, whoever wants to come there for morning classes, whatever there is.
We can, Jerry
Maybe even cooking classes. I mean, if we could put in, it's not that much to put in a simple, you know, small kitchen.
Mayor?
The teenagers, they need their space. The teenagers need a space for teenagers.
Eleven thousand square feet.
Can we, Susan, go ahead.
If I may, thank you. Um, everything you're asking for takes a lot of staff that we don't have right now. So I think that, you know, we have a staffing plan for teen activities because that was an initiative. We have a staffing plan that supports seniors at Gateway right now. We can do the survey, but to get to that point, you know, we would be coming back to you with a budget amendment to change things if we're going to add more programming than what we have already, you know, prepared for.
But you might find that the Turnberry location is more convenient for people than the Gateway location.
We may find that, yes, and maybe we'll end up flipping it and moving seniors to there and teens to Gate, teens would probably love to have Gateway.
But the idea, but, but Commissioner Joseph, the idea is, can we open up this teens, can we open up the Turnberry Sales Center for the purpose of, of establishing teen programming?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the net
But not to set it up to be teen-oriented only, because if you make it all, you know, if you give them carte blanche to make the walls teen, a teen center, then you're cutting it off to adults, which you may want to
So, so, I'll just, let me, let me chime in.
We have to start somewhere.
Can I chime in? The direction we gave, the direction we gave the staff was always some sort of youth or teen center, okay? Obviously, you know, we're gonna staff it from one or two PM, it's gonna sit idle, you know, in the morning, but right now, I think we should go with our original discussion, our original plan and open it up as a teen center. And then as time passes by and we perhaps can fulfill some of the staffing shortages we have, we could perhaps look at a mommy and me in the morning or some other, let's say, maybe chess for adults there, who, who knows? I mean, but I think we need to start somewhere.
Still, it's an interior space.
No, I understand.
You know, that's a shield against inclement weather.
Yeah, but, but I think that our
I mean, not everything is for outside.
Our original discussion and direction to staff was as a teen and youth center. So let's go with that and then perhaps we could have a second discussion next month or three or four months from now and say, okay, you know, we opened this up, it's a great success, maybe now we have enough staff and we could do some things here and there in the morning for other demographics.
That's why I'm saying maybe to set it up originally for the interior, the more interior space to be the youth center. So you leave the space where you walk in, the larger space where you walk in, for maybe something else in the future.
I, I, I don't agree, I don't agree. I think we're, we, we, we've established, we've budgeted and we're, we're, we're not
But the interior space hasn't been organized yet. I'm just saying to do it smartly.
If I may, there's breakout, those are, for us, they're called breakout rooms. And those are little spaces that those teens can find, they are ready to program those spaces with ideas such as, um, and it, it, uh, an arts and crafts space, um, a green space, a podcasting space. I mean, these are, their ideas are huge. And to not allow them to have that space in those seven or eight breakout rooms, I'm, I mean, that's kind of, I feel like that's doing our teens a very big disservice. They don't have a space.
And there is, um, you know, best practices, it's, it's, you know, some intergenerational programs are great and they're typically housed at the senior center. Where, um, you know, they, they can organize over here in their teen space and, you know, but when they're doing things together, it's at the senior center because it's more conducive for seniors, right? Doorways are wider, ADA access, it's more comfortable seating, everything like that. But for a teen program to really be successful, they need to have their own space. Them combining on a long-term basis does not really work.
No, they, they need
Susan, if I may, we, we already went through the trouble of untangling that when everybody was at Pelican. And we had that conflict. And finally Gateway opened and we were able to steer the seniors so they, they could have their own space and their, you know, cater to them and their needs, et cetera. And now the, 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 the teens were kinda left out while we, and this was the vision, this was the direction that we gave. Now everybody would have their space, right? We have the kids at Pelican, the teens, uh, you know, at, at this new space, the seniors have, have, have their space, which is amazing. And, and they're, you know, it's, and it's relatively
I've been hearing different things than what you're hearing.
Hold on, Jerry, and it's, and it's, hold on, I'm still speaking. And it's, and it's relatively new, right? So it's, it's part of creating that new habit of getting that bus, or maybe we need to make that busing adjustment or, you know, whatever, but it's, it's easier to create, to, to do that and steer the people towards an existing program than it is to adapt something for a select, a small group of people because
It's not a small group.
In a two-mile city, it's too far away. I think we can, we can solve that problem with transportation and each, everybody, we, that's the direction we gave. I agree with Alex.
I'm hearing from so many people and I think we really need to do this survey.
We need to make the transportation adjustment.
We need to do this survey.
I agree with Alex and with Jennifer. I think we absolutely need to move forward. Our direction has been clear and it's, we just, we just need to reach consensus and if that means
I, I have a request for the, the basketball court to be basketball and to add a volleyball area, a volleyball court. Because right now the girls are volleyball, like the last class, like I said before, is at eight PM, so they end up going out and after nine PM, it's really dark and it's, you know, it's too late for them, it's school nights, et cetera. So we could add basketball and volleyball and like you said, allow them to bring their ideas to life indoors and see what happens. Like it, it is my opinion that I want them more outdoors than indoors, but if we can find in that place the combination of the two, of being
I think there's the space, I think
Yeah, yeah, of being outdoors. And I know you have parking as well, so some of them that they're driving, et cetera. And if we can limit right now for residents only, so we can make sure that the people that is gonna go there to play basketball and the girls or boys that are gonna go play volleyball or play whatever, if we're gonna make a, a little gym inside, maybe they're gonna have, um, bicycles to do spinning, whatever. So it's for our people, there is gonna be their space and I disagree also with Jerry in the, in combining different ages. I believe teens are being left out for so long, they do need their space.
And they will have plenty of space.
And we want them out of the streets. And we want them to feel that they are taken care of. And so anything we can do for the teens, not forgetting the costway, okay?
Yes, but let me just say please, and I'd like to put it on the record tonight, that I've been hearing from so many residents in the northern area of the city that they are looking for an interior space at Turnberry for a, to have a gathering center, to have a meeting center, to have chess club, to have card tables, to be able to meet and, and gather and have a space to have, to have a community center in the northern part of the city. That's what, and I, I believe it's our duty to have their input in a survey as to that.
Commissioner
Otherwise, we're doing them a disservice.
Commissioner, we will do a survey and through the Parks and Rec master plan, the survey actually has recently been approved. I think we're gonna get a lot of good feedback from there and then, you know, this is master planning, right? So when we, when Navarro's lease is up and we have all the space, you know, if, if that's
That's four years from now, which is years.
The desire of the commission is to have a real, you know, multipurpose community center for varying ages, you know, that's something that we plan for.
Are we planning on using eleven thousand square feet for our kid's center? For our teenage center?
I think that the initial vision is that the front room remains, that front area remains open as useful space for anything. And then the other areas are more programmed space.
Correct.
Again, and we'll do the survey and see, you know, see how we can accomplish that.
Okay, so do we have consensus? Are we on the, have consensus about
Basketball and volleyball?
Opening a teen Opening a teen, uh, center area and, and of course, we can explore through a survey process. Again, I'm not hearing, you know, perhaps you're hearing from, but I just think that we need to move forward with our original plan.
So are we voting tonight for an exclusively teen center?
We're not voting. We're reaching consensus to open with the direction of a teen, youth and a teen center purpose and focus. That's what we're, we're not doing exclusivity. We're not entering into a contract. We're just trying to get the place open.
Yes, I, I'm for having it open.
We just need to know what to do. We're, we're willing and ready.
Teen center, please.
And I think, do we have consensus about teen?
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, 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 yes. And then eventually we could incorporate some other things.
Other program.
Listen, if no teens, if no teens show up, then we need to rethink it. But let's, we have to test it.
Teens show up.
Yeah, I think they will. So let's, let's, let's give it a shot.
We have what we need. Have a lot of adults that wanna use that space.
Thank you. Thank you.
Consensus granted.
Consensus.
Yes.
Thank you.
You have direction. Okay. Um, last item, and this will be a very brief because it's gonna be brief. Um, the address verification program. Okay, so we had address verification several years back. That, that agreement expired. Our school is now at one hundred twenty-seven percent over capacity. We have, as of today's day, two thousand two hundred and fifty kids in the school. We believe there's an estimate.
What's it passing like, like, we're over like five hundred kids?
Yeah, I mean, at a hundred.
Plus staff.
It's, it's, and we are over twenty-five teachers short. Um, we have no parking to accommodate these kids. We believe that in excess of thirty percent of the kids are coming in from Broward County. And we have to step in. We have a budget already where we've had some preliminary budget, budgetary allocation for address verification. We've been somewhat stymied. Um, well, we're, it's the direction of the school district that we enter into a verification, a program where we, uh, we, we would be responsible for the funding. But I think that it's, if we reach consensus here, it's up to us to say, how can we improve our outcome? And how can we improve the performance, you know, through, uh, you know, a contract in terms to really get this situation, uh, you know, under control. It's completely, completely out of control right now. So can we use our city resources and budget to fund a position through the school to, to commence, you know, to re, revive the address verification program?
Well, I can tell you when I was handing out flyers for election and I had so many people say, oh, no, you don't need to give it to me. I don't even live in the city. So it's just.
We have not.
So time after time after time. It's just absurd.
We have not had cooperation for, for the simple, the simple reason that, you know, this, the school district gets reimbursed per student, right? So their reimbursement model depends on as many students as possible.
Their budget suffers.
And so for them, you know, we are running, we have the highest, uh, uh, school count of any non-high school in the entire county. We're now the largest school. And so we've donated.
And we're a tiny city.
Right. And we are not, we are not running on the, the model of residents first, right? We gave a contribution of, of over twelve million dollars worth of land to build this school. And it's just, it's now completely spinning out of control. So I think we need to really just say, are we ready to revive this program?
So let me ask, because I think, I think everybody here is, you know, is gonna say yes, right? Why, why wouldn't we? But we've been down this road before. We had like one and a half employees. We put in, we, we funded the position. And, and we, it amounted to nothing. Like, what was it? Like we, we, we were able to, we were like ten kids and then like eight came back or something, or some, something, right? Uh, so yes, if it'll solve the problem, but what, what's different? Why, why is this time, why are we expecting a different result now when we didn't get it for the past ten years?
Well, I think we have to get a better, we have to have a better contract. We have to get.
And you have to be extremely aggressive with it.
And we have to get better, we have to have a better understanding with the school district.
I, in twenty twenty, during the pandemic, I sent them a letter with my name and last name telling about two families that they have five children, two were kindergarteners, that they don't live here in Sunny Isles, for a fact. I gave them the information with the tax of their homes, where do they live? They just ignore me. I went to the town halls and in front of the superintendent, new superintendent, district, uh, directors, et cetera, I told them. And the word that they keep saying is that we need to be compassionate. We need to be compassionate. If the kids are being there forever, we cannot keep kicking them out. And I kind of agree that the children that they've been there for years and now they are in middle school, seventh, eighth grade. I would not want to see those kids getting out because maybe the family, they cannot afford to live Sunny Isles, to live in Sunny Isles anymore. Or because things change. But I asked them also the question, like, uh, for how long is it okay to lie? Because this is to me, well, maybe we have to take out the kids that they are recently in the school and they gather with lies. But I said, for, what is recently?
Then that's discrimination. You can't discriminate.
Three years. So in twenty twenty, when our kids, I had neighbors that their children could not go physical to the school because they have a cap of how many kids per teacher the union was allowed to have there. So our, our residents, our children, my neighbors could not take their kids to school in person. So the children that I'm telling you, five of them, they don't live in Sunny Isles, they still in there. So I am okay with any solution that we can find. And it has to be binding. It has to be that if we're telling you this child doesn't live in here, you are gonna remove the children. I wanna see it happen. I will do anything. Like I volunteered to help them with the address verification, with the papers, et cetera. And the mayor's totally correct. The school is getting money per pupil, per child. So one more children is one, is more money. And then when they have more children, they have to hire more teachers. So it is now only adding, it just keep adding the volume of people coming to our school. Also, for almost one year, we have one exit that it was blocked. It was the stairs to the fifth floor, which is the, the one the middle schoolers are using. So God forbid we had an emergency, we have one less exit area for those children. Those children are the big ones that are in the, in the fifth floor. We have the kindergarteners in the first floor. So just imagine, imagine the chaos that we could have in case of a real emergency. So I am okay with any solution we can find. I do not believe in the school board. I do not believe in the directors. I don't think they wanna find a solution. Is the more, the merrier, the more money that they can get, the more teachers that they can hire, the happier they make the union. So again, again, my kids, they're being in the school since twenty-ten. I have two eighth graders right now and I have a three-years-old baby. So in a couple of years, I'm gonna start all over again. So sadly for them, they're gonna deal with me for a while. And I'm gonna continue being outspoken with what's going on because things are not going the right way. We have a very good relationship with the, with our principal and the assistant principals. They are aware of the situation. Since our first principal, since Dr., since Dr. Wiseman, we had this issue. And until right now, it's been twelve years I haven't seen no solution. Like I say, I started the school in twenty-ten. When twenty-twenty-two, I give the names and last names and I don't see anything happen. So I am okay, Mr. and Ms. Mayor, with anything we can do to make it better.
I mean, I've asked, as, as some of you might know, their certified letter came out and there are well over a hundred of them that bounced back. And some, some subterfuge happened. Well, name names, but in any event, we, I have been very pointed. I have said we need to call the fire marshal. It's a fire hazard, what's going on, and it's a safety hazard. We are pushing, we need to push the pedal in, in this direction. And you're right, we need to do a much better job of saying, what are you gonna do about it? I said to the, the representative, we had a Zoom meeting, uh, a week, a week or a week and a half ago. And I said, I'm gonna give you a list of a hundred and fifty names and what are you gonna do about it? And so at least they've stopped, they're stopping the out-of-area transfers. Now they have to put a stop to all of this. And we have to, we, we just have to, we just have to move forward. We don't have a choice. We can't keep adding kids. It's outrageous.
And even those transfers that they were accepting, they're illegal. Because what the law says is that you can apply because we have an open doors, open school policy in the state of Florida. That means that you can apply and you can go to any school, the whole state of Florida. And they can accept your transfer only, and that's the only, if they had capacity. When we are over capacity and they continue accepting transfer, they're even breaking the law. So, and they, but just, they get away with, with whatever they wanna do.
It has to, the mentality, the mentality absolutely has to change. And we have to, we just have to.
My son biology class, the biology class that he's taking is a high school class with an amazing good teacher, by the way. Um, it's gonna be in the high school transcript because it's a high school class. He has twenty-five students in a lab.
You cannot learn with that.
How can you learn? How can you teach? When you have twenty-five children, eighth graders, that they are like thirteen, fourteen years old in a class, in the lab class.
And so my question, if, if you bring this up again in the future and they say, well, you have to be compassionate. My question would be, where is the compassion for our students?
To our kids.
Exactly. Because you need, in the smaller class size, you do better learning, you do better teaching, you don't burn out. It's safer conditions, you know? Look at how rampant COVID was spreading. What? Because everybody was bunched up, right? So where is the compassion for our kids?
For our streets, because, oh, sorry, sorry.
And our traffic and all of that. That is a huge consequence.
That we have here in the plaza with the parking. Who you think is parking and doing that congestion at the time in and out? My children, the bicycle, because they actually live in Sunny Isles. Many of the people that are coming from everywhere, they are the ones causing those issues. One time, like five years ago, we have a problem hitting the causeway. Guess what? That day, it was around ten in the morning, half of the school wasn't there. Because we have a traffic situation here in the causeway. What is that telling you? They're coming from there. They're coming from north, many of them. So again, this is like really important for me. Um, coming to the beginning of the meeting is about safety as well. The more children that we have there, the less that we can be monitoring them. And they doing a very good job in the school, I keep, with the staff that, that they have. I am really happy with them. I don't believe our school is a problem, like the, the teachers, the principals and the staff in our school. I think it's district directors, is the directors. Even the, the school board per se, I've been talking to many of them, they don't know what to do. It's the directors, the ones that are putting the stop with our bureaucrats.
So we do have a meeting scheduled with the superintendent. That's a meeting that I've been trying to get for a month and a half. And they, they're, they clearly know at this point, you know, what the position of the city and the city administration is. So I just, we just need direction because I've asked very pointedly, I wanna see a contract on, on my desk. So I need.
What they want and what we're gonna get from them.
We, we need to now come up with a better contract, with better terms, and we need to, we need to make the effort. So this is about getting consensus to do something. And you're, it's, the traffic conditions are absolutely a disaster because of the, because of the kids coming in from, from Broward County. That's.
And I've been trying and, but, but Hollandale for sure.
Right. So we have to, we have to commit, we have to commit resources and we have to commit better effort to really, to do something about this. And that's really why this is a discussion item so that we can reach consensus about that.
Yes.
You, yeah, you have my, my, my agreement with that, my blessing. But I mean, what is gonna be different from the last school years where we had this type of contract in place or agreement in place? But if there's no willingness from the other side to cooperate and to enforce the, and to abide by the contract, let's say.
Well, we can.
What's gonna happen? I mean, obviously we need to have a more stringent agreement.
Right. And there, there are alternatives, um, you know, some, you know, than others.
How are we gonna make it work this time is my question.
I think our person would have to have some authority.
How are we gonna make it work?
Right. And so they talked about, you know, information sharing, you know, reports on a monthly basis. I'm not sure that that's enough, but they did at least concede. It seemed to me that it was an acknowledgement of the lack of cooperation in the last go-around that they weren't providing the information and they weren't, so, you know, their firm.
Didn't give us access.
Right.
Like we, we would ask and they, you know, there was, there was a certain understanding.
We can now have access to the data. By law, we, we don't have access to it.
Right. So, you know, they said, well, there are privacy concerns, but certainly they said we will, we will be more receptive to information sharing, what that means and what the details are, I can't say.
That wasn't the details. But yeah, I think let's explore it and let's.
Yeah, let's explore it. But obviously, I, I, I'm just concerned that we could be talking. There's gotta be some sort of agreement that will hold them to the fire.
Yeah. Well, can we get, can we get a cap? Do we, do we wanna impose a cap? I mean, they say we can't, but I'm not sure that that's the case.
Without the fire marshal, the fire department.
Yeah, we have a, it's a safety issue too.
And there's schools that are under enrolled. Isn't it though, I mean, you guys are correct, but isn't, isn't the way that it's supposed to work? It's like you have your capacity, right? So it's a hundred. So you have a hundred here, but you have five more people who show up. They just moved into Sunny Isles. Is, is the rule that it's like, are they supposed to say, sorry, you have to go to Granol's Park Elementary? Is that the rule?
According to them.
My understanding is if you do, if they do max capacity, that is what would happen.
Then we need to do that. Then what's the point of having rules if we're not following them?
But, but Jennifer, one thing.
Over a hundred and twenty-seven percent.
Yeah, but the one thing that is not fair is again, to allow kids coming from everywhere else.
Agreed.
And then when your neighbor goes knock on the door and tells you, my two kids are being sent to another school when I was getting invitations to birthday parties in Hollandale of the children that they're coming to our school. So then how can you?
Every road.
Right. It's regressive. That's, that's the issue for me. It's, it's regressive.
To clean house, you know? And I, I, again, I feel bad for whoever is gonna be able to be, um, thrown into this, but it is what it is. It is so sad because, um, a few years ago, also one teacher had an idea. And he was asking the very young children to give their address, to, to, to write their address. The, the parents are teaching the children to lie. They say, what address? The one that I, that I know or where I live? I mean, you name it. What's going on with the school is so bad in so many different ways. And it is.
Friends that she can't find out where they're going to, is there a crisis?
Precisely, correct. You know, but the, other ones are so bold. They send, they send you the invitation because they don't care.
But it's the younger, isn't it the younger grades that have the most overcrowding? Isn't it the, the kid, the smaller?
Yeah. When, when the smaller class size is the most, the most important. And by the way, before I'm taken out of context, I'm not advocating to be sending everybody to Granol's Park Elementary. Okay, I, it's, it's just to, to emphasize the point that, which is what you're saying. It's, it's not, if, if we were to follow the rules, those five students were, are not gonna be able to make it, right? We need to carve out, well, it starts by carving, it starts by removing the people who shouldn't be there.
They are breaking our contract as it is.
I understand.
As of right now, the agreement that we did, and we did twice. Once when they start the school and the second one, when we give, I believe, I might be wrong, I think four million dollars for the annex, for the fifth floor, for the, so two times. And the two times, we have very specific rules in the, in the book. And still they're breaking and still there's no consequences. And that's the issue. That's the issue. No consequences. We used to have art rooms, Spanish rooms, Russian. We have all the specialties. They are gone. Now they have double classes in there. So they have forty kids in one big room that is supposed to be a room for art and they're just putting more and more children in there. It's, sorry, it's a disservice in every single shape, way and form. So again, anything we can do, I am completely for it.
I think that on this, we absolutely have consensus.
Yes.
Let's just get it together and.
And I think we.
Put pressure on the right people to get it done.
We've directed legal also to come up with some ways to strengthen.
Ed, county.
Ed shaking his head.
The difficulty is, what penalties if they breach? What's gonna be the penalty if they breach?
Give the young parents community out.
You know, for, for the school board.
Now, now only that, that is special district, remember, that is special district. They function almost like a county. So on top of everything.
I know, that they're their own government.
Yeah.
But that's, that to me.
That's exactly right. It's, it's their school, it's their rules. And unless they're going to cooperate with us and, and enter into an agreement that they're actually going to fulfill, I don't know what else we can do.
I mean, I've asked, I said, what, what, what can we do beyond? That's the only.
Well, you have to talk to the fire marshal about that.
We'll, we'll make, we'll, all we can do is draft the best document we can and I guess ultimately it would.
But we can't draft a document until we've got an agreement.
But yeah.
Right. They have.
No, we don't. It's expired.
We, we, I've asked for, I've asked for their, you know, their latest template and asked, you know, when we're gonna see it, so.
Are there, are there, are you aware that there are other cities who've entered into this agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think.
We'd be interested in seeing that.
Parkland, they say mentioned Parkland in particular.
That's Broward County.
I'd like to see how those have worked.
That's Broward.
Was it Parkland or they said that other, they said that they've had, when they've had this issue in the past, maybe it wasn't Parkland, but when they've had this issue in the past that they've, you know.
That would be, that would be helpful for us.
To see some of the other, should we ask for?
An easy way, like you say, they can take out all the transfers. We are over capacity, every transfer you accept already, you know those people don't live in here.
They're over capacity.
You know, you, you know, but for a fact, that whoever requests a transfer, they don't live here. So let's start saying that those transfer, except for the middle schoolers, because probably they've been there for a while. So let's start with the kinder to the fifth grade, everyone who requests a transfer has to get out, because they don't live here, for a fact. They say it themselves. There you have. And let's see if they are willing to do that.
And here the transfer's already been accepted, to say we revoke the transfer?
Yeah, they can revoke.
They can accept it into a place that was over capacity.
They have to revoke it, we cannot do anything. That's an embassy, yeah. But, but if, again, for a fact, you know, whoever requests a transfer, they don't live in here. So they, if they wanna show.
Never.
Listen. If, if, it's like an embassy, the same thing.
We added and we gave it up.
No.
No, no.
We, we, we could have been a charter or, you know, there were choices were made early on and the moment it was a county, a regular county school.
If they wanna show you.
That's it, there's no authority there.
They're willing to cooperate, if they wanna show you, start with the transfers in the younger years. At least those children, they haven't been in our school forever, because they're in kinder, first, second or whatever. Let's see, let's see if they take at least 10 kids out. I wanna see, because I don't believe they're gonna take one, you know? It's like a proof of life in our countries.
So, so in reality, so. So this is the school district. They, they have their own, let's say, governance. We have no jurisdiction over them. Whatever we draft, whatever contract we draft, it really, we are relying on their goodwill and good faith to do this at the end of the day. What consequences can we impose on them? Really none, because they're on their, their own.
You're, you're bound to whatever you sign, right? So we haven't drafted anything, we haven't signed anything. I don't know what they would be willing to sign. However, I mean, clearly they're acknowledging that there is a problem. We all agree that there is a problem. Unlike in other municipalities, you have here a commission and a city that has always been willing to help and go the extra mile. We're still extending that help to solve the problem that we all agree we have. So they should take advantage of that, of that, you know, olive branch. But in exchange, we're not just gonna give it, you know, we want, we wanna be able.
But they need to, yeah.
It'll be, it'll depend on what you sign. Like right now, you're completely correct. We have no leverage, but that document hopefully would create something.
Yeah.
So like you want our help? Okay, but this is, this, these are the conditions for that help. And we help each other. You solve the problem in your school, we solve the problem for our kids.
And we gave them a computer room. We have our PD, you know, directing the traffic in the mornings.
Anything there.
We do everything that they want us to do.
The crossing guards.
The crossing guards. So, I mean.
To the, to, all of that is hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I know that.
Of course, it's for, it's for the safety of our kids, but still.
No, we won't do that.
We would have nothing.
We would have nothing.
We would have nothing.
They would never pay for that.
Our PD directs the traffic around there. They shouldn't be doing it. It's our goodwill.
Exactly.
I know, but what I'm trying to say is that we've been very nice.
That's not leverage.
No, no.
That's not, that's not the point.
But that is, we've been giving them goodwill, now they need to kind of return the favor and, and help us.
But you can't demand goodwill from someone that's.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, we're obviously not gonna take away the PD and the crossing guards, but they need to realize and be nice enough. But I don't know, that's the thing, we need to see what.
That would be in the, the agreement.
That's another agreement.
What alternatives do we have? It's only.
No, no, I, I, we go ahead with this contract, but it needs to be, I, I don't know, we need to draft it, it needs to be stringent and, and some way or form. But at the end of the day, I don't know legally.
Right, but they would have to accept those terms. So if we said, oh, there's gonna be some, right, monetary penalty for not complying, they're not gonna agree to that. But nevertheless, we can draft it, we can prepare something.
Yeah, let's draft it, let's try it.
So we can, but whether they'll agree to that? I can tell you that the prior agreement specifically had that each transfer request, ultimately it was up to them based on the hardship and best interest of the student. So they, they retained that authority always, even with this whole program, they make the final call on that. So.
So they just needed our assistance in identifying the students.
But they get the final call.
Then, then they, they didn't do anything with the information.
To, to, to verify that and they, it didn't work, yeah.
So, and that's the question, is what they will agree to.
Listen, let's try it, perhaps there's some more goodwill. I mean, it is spinning out of control like the, the mayor said. And I think they have an obligation, whether we could hold them to anything, but they have an obligation. I think they're starting to realize that things are our control in that school. And we're trying to help them. I mean, we gotta collaborate.
In Miami Dade that has a problem that has been mitigated, but working through the school board, that somehow they figured out something? So there isn't any city in Miami Dade.
Yeah, like you see a metro, have a way to study or something.
The city of, um, Parkland right now, but it's a Broward County having a similar issue, but they're working on districting other issues throughout the county.
But, but please check the, it was not the original agreement, but it was the agreement when we did, when we gave them the $4 million for the extension, for the fifth floor. In that agreement, we had something about address verification. Not the original and not the address verification that we gave them a person, somebody full time, half time. No, no, I know, they are all separate. So, but the one with the $4 million, I'm pretty sure it had address verifi, I read it, I'm gonna bring it to you, I know I have it, okay?
Okay.
So yes.
100%.
Consensus, right?
Okay. Okay. We're almost at the home stretch here. We have, we have, oh.
No, public comment, I can't believe it.
Are you? We have two, Peter Lavilla who left very early on, I don't see Peter Lavilla, and David Virgil, who has been waiting very patiently. See, if we had a consent agenda, you would be, you would have been out of here three hours ago. But we didn't, a lot of people didn't want that idea, so here we go.
Okay, so, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commission. My name is David Virgil, my address is 17500 North Bay Road, Sunny Isles Beach. Sorry, but I have a few questions and things to say. First of all, I wanted to ask if you could move the citizens forum to the beginning as you just mentioned, like.
Consent agenda.
Yeah.
You wanna move it? Get all your friends to not.
Be in disagreement, yeah.
Create such animus and antipathy to the idea of a consent agenda.
Another thing, I wanted to know when the drainage improvement project would begin along, between 174th Street and 183rd Street? Because the street always floods and it's, it's been like that for years. Second question, I heard that Freebie was gonna become available in the city. I just know there's any like launch window to when the service will begin? And like what days it will be available, weekends or every day? I heard it was only weekends. Another thing, I don't remember that. Oh yeah, someone asked me if you all could add the shuttle schedule to the shuttle app? They say the times are sometimes inaccurate when you press your stop. They say the bus will pass in like 10 minutes and it really takes like an hour to get there? Because the app, the GPS misses up sometimes. And, yeah, that's basically it. So, the flooding.
Hey, David. The other day when it was flooding so badly on Collins Avenue. I noted, I drove myself through the heavy rain. It was quite a large amount of flooding and I'm going to be discussing that with the city manager as to what we can do to remediate that.
Yeah, because the water always reaches like over your ankles, even on the sidewalk.
There, there's a project for the Central Island to redo the whole.
Approximately when will it begin?
We're in the final stages of the design.
So the earlier MOU, they hope to go out to bid before the end of the year, bid the project, they would hope to start within six months, about six months from now. But it's going to be a long project, but that's when it should start.
Yeah, and Freebie.
Freebie, well, we're, we have a traffic study that is part of that, it has to do with the funding and so forth.
So we did fund for it in this budget for weekends only. You're correct on that. But to be able to use our, our OCITT money, our half penny sales tax money for that, we have to do a survey and submit that to Miami Dade County and get their approval. So we're in the process of doing that survey, yes.
And the last question was if you could add the bus schedule to the app?
I made a note and yes, we'll work on that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, David.
Ethan. You're up.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Commission and whatever, whatever's left of the guests.
You state your name and address for the record.
Ethan Bazok. I live at Aventura, 3029 Northeast 188th Street. At first, I was gonna campaign for a candidate, but apparently the city attorney says that's not good. So I'm gonna change subjects. First of all, I want to thank you guys for all that you guys are doing when it comes to youth. I didn't know that you guys were so involved with the youth center. And I know City of Aventura would definitely be, I'm gonna be talking to a couple of commissioners to see if we can have that coming in, but I'm also a member of the Youth Advisory Board in Aventura, so I'll definitely be talking with the board about that. But I wanted to talk to you guys now, changing the subject from campaigning. I'm your representative now to the Miami Dade Youth Advisory Board, the Miami Dade Youth Commission for District Four. So I know that you guys just had a brand new youth advisory board come in, right? I'm gonna be your liaison. I'm gonna be the voice for this city, for the youth advisory board of this city to Miami Dade. All I need from you guys is to just, you know, invite me to those meetings. I'm gonna talk to the, the city clerk and I'm gonna see if I can, you know, attend some of those meetings. But I wanna be involved with a lot of these things. Because what I told them at the meetings today is that we're the future, we're the voice of the future. And what I told them today, what I told them when we were going over the objectives of the Miami Dade Youth Commission, I told them that our number one objective should be increasing the political involvement among students within our governments. Because that's what's important. Because today we go to school, today we're involved in all these basketball courts and all of these, you know, big school projects. But tomorrow, when we take up the gavel, when we take up the podium, when we're sitting there behind a seal, that's what matters, that's what really counts. So the work that you guys are doing today with all these youth advisory boards, with all these commissions, with all these school topics, I mean, as, as long as the discussion might go, it's very important stuff. And on behalf of the students that I know from sunny Isles, from Aventura, from Bale Harbor, from the whole District Four, thank you guys for discussing that. And I hope, I really do hope that I get to work with you guys a lot closer to make sure that your youth and your young demographic are represented adequately in Miami Dade, in the Stephen Clark Government Center, in the Miami Dade Commission Chambers. So thank you guys very much and I hope that I'll be working with the commission a lot closer in the coming days.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for being involved and being so passionate and, you know, thoughtful. So it's great, yeah.
Can you please give your contact information to Myra in the back row?
Myra, Myra, wave, there you go. Thank you, Ethan.
Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
So moved, consensus, consensus.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.